Mr. Young, you are our only citizen rep today, so you have public comments, you better get them ready now. And go easy on us. But I will call the meeting to order and we'll all mute our phones. We'll have our invocation and then stand for the pledge. Let's go ahead and stand. Lord, thank you for another beautiful day and we look forward to the warmer weather that you provide for us and everything that will happen with our, with creation. Once we do get that warm weather and we, we thank you for it. We pray for those who are sick or whether that be long term or short term, pray for them. You give them comfort or give them healing. And we, we pray for this town, that you will bless it in, in many ways. And the, and the manner in which we lead it, pray that it be proper and that we will do so with respect for one another and consideration for the people of this town. And just pray that our, those, the employees as they present today, that you give them clarity of mind and, and we just pray that today will be a good day. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So our public comments are three minutes. And you have any public comments? Okay, we're gonna skip the public comment period. And we, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Get down to new business. And so we are going to get a good grip on the finances of, of the town and have kind of a unique situation with regard to finances in the town. So we're all going to get a little tutorial on what that is and who's starting.
I'll start.
Brandon's gonna start.
Well, good morning. Thank y'all for coming today. This is a, an important meeting every year for us because it gives you all insight into what staff has on the horizon for next year's budget. And it also gives you, it gives us an opportunity to get feedback from you all on our, our goals. So as the mayor said, the first part of the presentation, I wanted to bring you all up to speed on our financial position. The town currently is in a very healthy financial position. The first slide that you have in front of you is a funding overview. This is assuming that the 2023 SPOLOST passes. And of course, the, the final vote on that is today. We'll know this evening whether or not that passes. Assuming it passes and keeping in mind that the 2023 SPOLOST funding, if it does pass, does not come in all at once. But assuming it does pass, that would be a thirteen million, four hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollar funding. We have five million, five hundred eighty thousand, three eighty-four oh six remaining in the 2017 SPOLOST. That money, of course, is all spoken for. We have two million, eight hundred and three thousand, thirteen dollars in ARPA funding. We have four million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars in reserve funding and the same amount in surplus. And the reason, of course, is council passed a provision several years ago that we would retain forty percent of unassigned funds for reserve with a goal of fifty percent. So we have just over nine million dollars right now, according to the last audit report, in unassigned funds. Fifty percent of that is your reserve for emergencies and you have the other four point six million in surplus. So thi- this number, thirty-one million, one forty-seven, three eighty-three, again assumes that the 2023 SPOLOST passes and that, that thirteen point five million of that comes in over six years. Assuming that the 2023 SPOLOST does not pass, we're in a position of seventeen million, six fifty-four, eight eighty-three. And I'll email you all a copy of this today. So, but again, these are all the same numbers, just without the SPOLOST. So that is what we have currently, not counting 2013. So very healthy position for the town. Takeout SPOLOST, you're looking at twelve million dollars, two point eight ARPA. We're gonna talk about that extensively here in a few. Four point six surplus and four point six in reserve. This is just another, just kind of a redundant slide, but it's just you're showing your total amount of, of unassigned fund balance. Nine million, two seventy-one, four eighty-five, fifty percent of that in reserve and fifty percent in surplus. So let's talk about how we look at each of these funds. So reserve funding, like I said, you all voted on February nineteenth of 2019 on a policy that requires us to maintain a balance of forty percent of reserves with a goal of fifty percent. I'm gonna come to you next month with a policy request, an official policy request. It's just gonna say that we're, we wanna, we wanna retain fifty percent. I think the, the language forty percent with a fifty percent goal, if our goal is fifty percent, let's just make it fifty percent. We'll make it a policy and then in that policy will be more guidance on how we manage unassigned funds and things of that nature. Anyhow, based on the numbers provided on our most recent audit report, fifty percent of our operating funds is, again, equal to four point six million dollars, give or take. GFOA standard is two to three months, so a six month reserve is very healthy. And reserve funds are used to, to balance the budget during times in which revenues cannot cover operating costs or to assist in the aftermath of a natural disaster or other time of crisis. Keep in mind that unless we do some really extreme spending, we'll probably always have, you know, we'll obviously always have a reserve and we'll probably always have a little bit of a surplus. So we're gonna go through that surplus before we ever get to the reserves. So it's kind of a double backup. Now, there will be times when we wanna spend surplus, we need to spend surplus. But we don't have to always spend it all the way down. But we, we definitely wanna manage that and be very careful with how we're holding on to funding and what we're doing with that funding. But currently, if we had a, a major issue, we got nine million dollars to work with. But, um, so that's your reserve. Surplus funding, these are funds that remain after subtracting the reserve balance from the total unassigned balance. Again, according to our last audit, we had about twenty-one point seven months of operating funds. So half of that would be four point six. These funds are the result of various revenue sources, including property and sales taxes paid by our citizens and should be used to fund town operations to include personnel, equipment, capital, projects, facilities, and other amenities. Because of the nature of these funds, the primary focus should be on one-time expenses. It's not to say you can't use it for staffing but, or repeating expenses, but just keep in mind that this isn't a forever source of, of funding. All right, ARPA. These funds are provided under the American Rescue Plan Act as part of President Biden's COVID pandemic recovery. We were awarded two point eight million dollars in ARPA funding. And these funds are, the use of these funds is restricted to what was in the, in the, I said interim final rule in here, but the final rule is out now from the US Treasury. We accepted the funds under the standard allowance, which is a revenue loss calculation. So local governments can take up to ten million dollars of their ARPA funds as revenue loss. So some bigger governments, of course, you know, they got, say if you got, you know, twenty million dollars, well, ten million of that could go toward revenue loss, the other ten had to go towards other allowed uses. Taking it as a revenue loss in our standard allowance, streamlines our reporting requirements. We had to do a report every year to the federal government. But there are also, there's still, rules still apply to how it can be spent. So we're gonna get to that in a few. But these funds have to be obligated, meaning orders are placed, contracts are signed, work is being done by the end of 2024 and they have to be fully, fully spent by the end of 2026. And like I said, I'll get to that. We'll get back to SPOLOST or, or ARPA here in, here in a little while. Any questions so far on our financial position? I know I answered that pretty quick, but it's pretty straightforward.
I don't have a question. I just wanna thank you because I was the one that asked this and, because I'm a visual learner and we had all these funds around, I was trying to figure out which was which and what we could do with what. And the way you put it together was exactly what I was hoping for.
Thank you for that. All right. So 2017 SPOLOST update. Again, our original projected revenue for SPOLOST when it was passed in 2017 was nine million, twenty-five thousand dollars. Actual revenue to date in Jan-, as of January was ten million, six twenty-eight, two fifty-two, thirty-six. We are gonna be collecting revenue through June of 2023 for this SPOLOST. The projected total revenue is eleven point five million. Project costs to date are five million, two hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and twelve. And the balance current, the current balance is five million, five eighty, three eighty-four oh six. Work is being done, as you all know, has been. We were all, we've all been talking about this internally for some time now as we prepare for this meeting, but it's difficult to spend this amount of money when you have, you know, a, a small staff. You know, you gotta have somebody to manage the project, you gotta have the projects planned. There's all these steps that we have to go through. So we have, we have spent half of, of, almost half. And we've got a lot of the projects completed and, and all of the projects have been, you know, visited in some way. They're either under design, some have been canceled. You know, the, the G dot project was canceled because G dot said no. You know, the, the roundabout grew. It had to, based on study. And so we're, we had to do a due diligence phase for that. So that project grew. But we are working on these projects. The ones that are completed have been good assets and good additions to the town. And I have no doubt that the, the ones that we're continuing to work on are gonna be great as well. So completed projects include roads and streets, ALM match, so four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars was put towards that. Sewer expansion, that was a one point seven million dollar project. That was completed a while back now, but it was one of the first projects we really jumped on. Full debt reclamation and repaving of Powers Court and Sonora Road, that was two hundred eighty-seven thousand. Milling, patching and repaving of Briarwood and Far Road, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, one twenty-four. Mill, patch and repaving of Southampton, Rivercrest and Windsong, three forty-five. And the Dogwood Trail Culvert have been completed. We've also been working diligently on the debt reduction portion from a paving project that happened years ago. So all of that's going on. Remaining projects, we've got the roundabout, three point five million dollars. Hanley Park renovations, we still have two sixty-nine, two hundred sixty-nine thousand, eighty-three dollars outstanding there. That's for the restroom and hopefully some other improvements that we can fit in. Pickleball's approximately, I said approximately seven hundred thousand. We're still waiting on some numbers on that from the change order that had to happen because of our subgrade issues. The Pendleton Culvert, three hundred and ten thousand, seventy-four, fifty-three, that is in the property acquisition phase right now. So we're working on that. That project's been approved, contractor's been selected, so getting ready to move on that. And then renovations at eight eighty-one, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. This project has been, that one's been stalled because unfortunately the building was affected by the cold weather and we had the pipes bust. So that just created a bigger mess for us. So we're still waiting to hear back from insurance on what they're gonna cover. So this project became much bigger than it originally was scoped for. But we are working towards that. Scott and I talked yesterday about, he's working on the plans for that. We're gonna be meeting with recreation soon to talk about, because the, the plan is to move them into the offices back there and to, to create more classrooms and programming space and a, hopefully a community room. So we're gonna be meeting with them to talk about that and start finalizing the plans and get moving on that project. Any questions on seventeen SPOLOST?
Will that remain in SPOLOST? Is it spoken for?
Most of it is, yeah. The, the three and a half million for the roundabout's gonna take up the lion's share of it. And then I, you know, we, we met with you all, you know, a couple of weeks ago individually. And we talked about that, that one shortfall that we were looking at for, I think it was around a hundred thousand dollars. So yeah, it's pretty much all spoken for. And then we've, you know, we're still, we're still gonna, you know, we're holding out hope that some of these projects are gonna come in under budget so that we don't have that where we have to pay that one little amount of money out of another fund.
So that balance of five point five million is, is that stuff spoken?
Right.
Time limit on, when you have?
According to our conversations with legal, there is no time limit, but it is, it, it's, it's, as long as we're showing movement on it. So it's very common to have projects from a previous SPOLOST ongoing at the same time a new SPOLOST starts. That, that happens. And if SPOLOST passes tonight, that'll obviously be the case here. But it's definitely not something that we wanna pump the brakes on necessarily or stop doing. We just keep plugging forward and get those projects knocked out. Any other questions on SPOLOST update? Scott, did you have anything else you wanted to add? All right. Let's talk about ARPA fund implementation. So again, we received two million, eight hundred and three thousand, thirteen dollars in ARPA funding. We, we did the standard allowance elected, election for revenue loss. And these funds can be provide, can be put towards government services. And that is a very, in the, in the final rule, it's a very broad term, very broad range of uses. And again, December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, they have to be obligated and by the end of twenty-six, they have to be fully spent. So if you remember when we got the CARES Act funding, which was another coronavirus pandemic relief package, we got a little over three hundred thousand dollars for that. Our election for that, it went towards public safety salaries during the pandemic. So it kinda came in, it was applied to that, and then we had this, we had this, you know, the surplus, if you will. And we turned around and we used that funding for things like the, the playground, some other equipment. You know, we, we spent it on stuff like that for the community. ARPA has a similar provision that would allow us to apply this two point eight million dollars to personnel services over this fiscal year. So we would report, you know, some of it from, you know, the, the first half because that report has to go out next month. And then the, the other half or so would be reported on the, on next year's report. But that would get the funds obligated and spent in, in one movement. But it creates that two point eight million dollar surplus. So then we turn around and we spend that money as it was intended for things that, that benefit the community. What this does though, is it, it, it eliminates the, the timing, the pressure of getting them obligated and getting them spent by the timeframe because we've already done that if we, we take that, that action. I don't, I don't suggest that we sit on the money for any length of time. And as you'll see in a minute, we have, we have developed a, a proposal for the use of that funding in the next budget. It's a lot of money and we're gonna try to put it to good use. But that's, that's kind of the, that's kind of the way, you know, we, we wanna go with it is, is, is that option. We've talked about this with our auditors and we've talked about it with, as you remember, we hired James Moore CPA to help manage and do the reporting for ARPA. We hired them. You guys approved that last year. So we have confirmed with both that this is doable. In fact, a lot of our auditors' clients are, smaller clients are taking this option. So throwing that out there. We will probably come to you in April to ask you to take that action officially. Does that work?
There was some talk about six months ago about congressional clawback on this money. Is that talk gone?
I haven't heard anything else about it. They've, that was before they actually released the second half of the funding. And then they went ahead and gave the, you know, issued the second half of the funding. So I haven't heard any more talk about that. All right, moving on. So what I came up with when we were trying to figure out, okay, what, how do we apply this funding to benefit the community? Because it's supposed to go towards government services, things of that nature. I said, let's split it up between two different fields. Eighty percent of the funding towards community impact, which are projects that have a direct impact on the community. These are things that the public can see, things that they can use, such as park and facility improvements, economic development, infrastructure, things of that nature. And the other twenty percent put towards government operations. These are purchases that improve the town service delivery, operational efficiency, such as technology upgrades, equipment and training. So the breakdown of that is you get about two million, two point two million dollars for community impact and five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for government operations. So we've broken down the community impact as, as displayed here. About one point six million, one point five eight million for community development, two hundred and thirty thousand for signage and safety, and we'll get into that in a minute. Three hundred thousand for public works facility. This little bar here, this graphic wasn't big enough to put the title out here, but that's parks and facility improved, park recreation improvements is about thirty thousand. Then a hundred thousand in contingencies. And I, I wanna talk about contingencies here in a little while because, you know, it's important to have contingency funding, I think, but there are other projects that we could probably put some of that money towards. But anyway, that's the, that's the visual breakdown there. So community development projects, last, at the last retreat, we actually talked about ARPA and I went back and looked at the minutes. And you all said that, you know, one of the focal points of ARPA spending, you would like to see on downtown multi-use path and sidewalk improvements. So we've included that in there. And the, the vision here is to, since we're doing the, the streetscape improvement up at the Gunnin Building, try, look at continuing that and, and just make it where there is a, a full width cart path slash sidewalk from that property all the way down Sonora Road, as far as we can make it happen with that amount of money. And I, I think a lot of people would make use of that. You know, we've talked before about, you know, the share of the road concept. But after talking to, to, to people in the community and stuff, I think, I think there's a good fear, especially in this long straight, straightaway. There's a fear of people getting out there on their golf cart. But I think if we could make the existing sidewalk where it would accommodate golf carts and walkers, make it more of a multi-use path, do some additional improvements for safety, I think people would make, make use of that. I think they would very much appreciate that and it would tie in everything that we're trying to do downtown. So that's part of the goal with that money. And of course, additional public parking. That's, that's something that we're, we're gonna have to face as the downtown gets more active and we grow. And we'll talk about some of those options here in a little while. Signage and safety projects. So we've been talking for a long time now about downtown signage, wayfinding signage, things of that nature. So we've put two hundred and thirty thousand in, in this proposal for number one, town facility signs upgrades. So our library, rec center, the museum, you know, our parks, all of those monument signs have been here probably since I've been here. They're at least twenty, twenty to twenty-five years old. We talked to a, a sign group the other day and, and, um, according to them, they've, they've tried to kind of reface them a couple, a ti- a time or two anyway. But they bear our old logo, they bear our old colors. They're, they're tired. And so it's, it's, if we're gonna, you know, revamp and, you know, do things, we, we, we wanna look at upgrading those signs. We wanna add wayfinding signage downtown. We've talked about that several times in the past. And we also wanna add public parking signage. We do have public parking, but it's not well established where that is. So we wanna add some public parking signage. Then of course, digital speed signs, traffic data monitoring. For Sonora Road, Spencer Lane and Swanson Road. Spencer and Swanson especially because those are share of the road targets. Sonora Road in front of Town Hall in the park. are share the road targets. Uh, Sonora Road in front of Town Hall in the park to, to slow people down through there. There are white papers, there are studies that show that these radar signs that flash your speed, they do have a positive effect on speeding. Um, and so we've looked at them, we, we visited, uh, Phillip and I visited Brooks who recently installed some. Uh, they've had, you know, a good positive, uh, uh, response from that. The signs also do record data, like our smart trailers do. So if we implement these signs, um, they will tell us, you know, how many cars are passing through each day, what the average speed is, what the top speed is, what the low speed is. It'll give you all of those counts, uh, just like our smart trailers do. That way, when, when we have a complaint on speeding, uh, we can get out there and we can see what time of day is the, the, you know, the people are speeding the most. Um, is there really a speed prob- problem? Usually when we put our, uh, trailers out in a neighborhood that's complaining about speed, uh, the result is that there's really not a speed problem. The average speed is usually close to the posted speed limit. What people are seeing is the outliers. You're out walking your dog and a car passes you at forty-five, yeah, it, it's, it's a problem. It's going fast and you know it's going fast because you're standing there right next to it. Um, but, you know, a, uh, a human being walking down a roadway with cars going twenty-five to thirty miles an hour, it's going to feel like those cars are going much faster. So there's a lot of perception when it comes to speed. Not to say there's not people speeding out here, I see it every day when I walk out here. But, um, these signs are, I think, important to get people to slow down. So that's, that's a, a part of that project there. Um, we have thirty thousand right now for park and facility improvements. This includes resurfacing the tennis and basketball courts and veteran park updates. I want to pause on the veteran park updates right now. Uh, a couple of months ago, and I've reported this to y'all, um, we had a citizen come to us wanting to add, um, a Space Force flag to veterans park. They also wanted to add a Merchant Marine flag. Uh, I can get on board with the Space Force, I'm not so sure about the Merchant Marine. But, um, at any, any rate, we, we met, we talked, um, any addition is probably going to require movement of all the flagpoles, just to make sure they're symmetric and look right. Uh, but when I was first contacted, uh, he thought he had a donor and, um, I followed up with him this weekend and the donor is not willing to donate anymore. So the, the flagpoles are going to be about a thousand dollars. I'm assuming that was for the two he was originally wanting, so I'm assuming it's around five hundred for, for one, if we did the Space Force flag. But, um, at any rate, I, we are seeing some cities adding Space Force flags to their veterans parks and things of that nature. It's a very new service. It's a branch of the Air Force, like the Marines are a branch of the Navy, but, um, they are seen as separate. So, um, anyhow, um, I would like to use some of this funding for seeing that through next year. Uh, it's a simple addition, but, you know, it's important. This, this citizen is also working with me. He's a retired, uh, military, uh, officer. And, um, we've also talked about in the past, we have, um, some sort of military static display there. He has some connections and he, he has been working with me on, or for me, I got, I guess I should say on our behalf, contacting the, those in the military who are responsible for that kind of thing. Um, he was aiming really big at first. I think he was going for like an F sixteen or something. Um, and believe it or not, they're, they're out there, you can get them. The problem is, when you do get something like that, it's up to us to get it transported and mounted and maintained. And so you can imagine having to keep something like that painted and all that. So we're not quite looking for something that large. Uh, I had in mind like a smaller artillery piece or a personnel carrier or, you know, something along those lines. So, um, he is working on that for us, but, um, we would have to have, even if it's a donated item, we'd obviously have to have some way to have it, uh, displayed. So generally you're looking at, you know, concrete and, um, just a few things to think about there.
Brandon, that number on, on resurfacing, that's a really low, low number for resurfacing. What, can you tell us what you mean when you say resurfacing?
Scott, didn't you get those numbers or wasn't that kind of an estimate that you threw out?
Yeah, we got those from the people who are doing the pickleball court and also from, uh, another vendor.
That just paint?
It's considered like acrylic, like, surface material, basically painted on, but yeah.
And again, we have, this is a preliminary proposal for ARPA, so if we need to adjust this in any way we can, um, you know, so that was just something that we put out there. Um, they definitely are coming to for, for that kind of improvement. Uh, public work facility. So we have in this current budget, just under two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the goal is to move the pole barn from behind the old police department over to Hanley Park. We want it, we want to free up that space for parking, cart path passage, things like that, to be more of part of the downtown, more useful for downtown visitors, for the parks, things like that. Um, so the goal has been to move that building over to Hanley, next to the existing building at Hanley. Um, and of course, we've, we're coming to find out through research that it's going to take a little bit more than what we had budgeted. Um, but I think it's still important to look at moving that. So what we're looking at is a fully enclosed metal building that would also be fenced in. So you'd have a fenced in public works yard at the back of Hanley Park. Um, so we've included that funding in here. Again, freeing up that space would be huge for downtown because we're looking for parking. So at, 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 you know, minimally, it's, it's, you know, you could add a lot of parking back there for the park and for downtown restaurants and our events and things like that. Questions on that?
If I can make a comment, um, and I know you and I have spoken about this before, um, I'm totally in, in, in favor of having them move. Um, it's my opinion that I think that we should probably pursue purchasing the remaining property, um, from Sandra. Um, and may I, or you want to?
Well, I mean, the problem with that is it's not for sale. I mean, it, they're, they've told us that they want to give us first right of refusal, but they're just not ready to sell it yet. So their timeline is not going to line up with ours. Um, it could be years before they're ready to sell. And another problem that, that, you know, since we've talked, we've talked internally, my fear is that those buildings are not going to be sufficient for what we're trying to do. And so you're going to have the purchase cost on top of demolition and then rebuilding. So it's, it's a good idea. Don't get me wrong, it's a great idea. And, and I would love nothing more than to have a contiguous piece of property over here that's, you know, serves the town. Um, but yeah, after talking to, Ms. Stiltner, um, again, she's, because we, we met with her after that to talk about another property, that's going to be affected. But, um, but yeah, they're just, I just don't think their timeline is going to line up with what we're trying to do. And so if we keep pushing it out, cost of land keeps going up, cost of construction keeps going up. And when they're, when they're ready, then we get to a point where instead of, you know, moving or building something on a piece of property we already own, and then freeing up a piece of property we already own for another use, is going to turn into a six or seven hundred thousand dollar project, if not more. So that, that's the only concern.
Can you clarify what property that is?
So Mr. Deaton's place right behind us, the, the, the remaining piece of what we bought here, so his house, the outbuildings and all of that are, that are up there. I think it's another five or six acres. Yeah, it's, because I think the whole piece was, yeah, the whole piece was over, a little over ten and we bought three. So, um, but yes, they have, they have told us that they, you know, the family wants to do first right of refusal for the town. Um, but again, we don't know when they're going to be ready and we don't know what those costs are going to be. This would kind of, you know, it would take a, a, you know, this source of funding and it would give us the ability to, to, to have a, you know, it's not going to be a fancy facility, but it is an enclosed metal building that all of our equipment can be stored in. It'll be fenced, uh, so it'll be, it'll be as secure as we can expect. So it'll give us that big building and then the, the brick building beside it for public work storage. All right. And then again, contingencies, I have a hundred thousand dollars. This covers unanticipated costs associated with proposed projects. Um, any remaining funds would be directed towards other projects and improvements. So, again, we, we, we're going to talk about this more as we go, because this is going to be part of the budget process. This is just kind of our initial proposal for what, you know, what we, the funds could or should be used for. Um, so that's, uh, community improvements. And then government operations, we broke it down again between departments. So public works, uh, admin and court, police and the, what we call leisure services, library, rec and museum. Each would, would have a hundred and forty thousand, one fifty, sixty-five to spend on government operations. To give you some examples, for the police department, they need new body cameras. The current cameras were purchased when I was still in the chief's position, so I probably bought them a couple of years before I took this position. So you're looking at, definitely looking at end of, end of service life for the body cameras. Upgraded in-car laptops, uh, a couple of new radios, a patrol vehicle, that includes, uh, upfitting, lockout kits, some jump bags, rapid ID units, new laser units and stop sticks. So I think that's a good list for them. Library, museum and recreation. So recreation has submitted, uh, library and recreation both submitted in their requests for six-passenger golf carts. I think this is a good addition because we rent six-passenger golf carts every year, uh, for, for events. This would eliminate the need to rent those. Uh, recreation, since we're putting them, their offices in a different facility, this would give them something to use to go back and forth between facilities. Uh, staff, I know, would use the golf carts, you know, uh, around town and during events and things of that nature. So that was part of their requests. Recreation, continuing office technology, uh, office furniture, additional activities and programming. And we're also putting the Hanley Park scoreboards under that. Library has requested upgrades for their children's and teen areas, uh, the golf cart, of course, and then books and other equipment. And this is just, so there was five thousand dollars left. We put that under museum and of course, that's obviously something that can be adjusted, um, as needed. Um, that's the, the funding proposal for, uh, leisure services. Admin and court, digitis, digitization of court records, laser fish interface for the records management system, open records management software, a radio-based station for the court office, um, new monitors for the breakout room and conference room B. Uh, AV upgrades for the council chambers and courtroom. So, um, there's a couple of things we want to look, look for in here. So, uh, number one is wireless microphones for the two tables. I actually want to purchase two new tables for in here. These came from the old building. They were put in here for, uh, separation for, uh, you know, during coronavirus, during the pandemic, to keep people safe and separated. But I think the layout works better than have it, because as, by design, I'd be here and Dennis would be here and Sandy would be sitting over there by Dee and we all be kind of crunched up here. So I think that gives us a lot more space. So buying a couple of newer tables, uh, with wireless microphones, uh, would improve the aesthetic anyway. Um, also what we found is these, these are noise cancelling microphones. So if you're not right on them, it doesn't pick anything up. And Dee and Sierra and Phillip, when they're doing minutes or their meetings, they don't always catch everything. Um, and so, uh, particularly if there's comments made from back in the back. So we'd like to look at the possibility of adding a couple of, uh, microphones in the ceiling towards the back and maybe especially on the podium microphone, uh, upgrade it so where it's more adjustable. Like the noise cancelling has been turned, has been adjusted to almost off on these and they still, they, they do their job. So, um, sometimes it's hard to hear. So, uh, just want to do some upgrades there. Um, an after-hours call box for the front door, this is really for the police department. I put it in the admin budget. It's just something that I've, I've recognized, um, you know, that somebody comes up here after hours needing a police officer, you know, their recourse is to, you know, they got to call nine-one-one or four-six-one help. Um, you could have a call box there. It's about a thousand bucks. You, you put it near the front door, they push a button, it goes directly to dispatch and it's a voice, you know, they don't have to pick up a re, they, some of them have receivers. But you just push a button, it goes to dispatch and you say, hey, I'm at the Tyrone Police Department, I need, I need an officer, I need to file a report. Um, I think that, that would be an important add for this building. Technology replacement, we've talked about staff computers and a plotter, uh, training and staff development. We've talked about getting some staff polo shirts for events. And then of course, there's, there's other software equipment and services that, that we could use to increase our side. Public Works, the dump truck, uh, replacing the dump truck, salt spreaders. Uh, we've talked about these diesel, portable diesel light towers for events. Um, they're about fifteen thousand dollars apiece. Um, and then other small equipment, chainsaws, anything else that, that they may need. Uh, the dump truck, uh, kind of had a little bit of a, an issue last week. I know Cody's got it running. Is it kind of limping along? Are we, yeah. So, uh, it's probably time to, to look at that replacement. And then, all right, so that's, that's the end of ARPA. So any questions on ARPA?
We had spoken a while ago and I thought it was a great idea about putting the lights in at Shamrock Park, you know, that they could flip instead of having portable lights at events.
We did look at that and the cost of that is going to be, I think, at the end of the day, it's going to be similar to what we're going to do with the light tower, but you're also paying a monthly fee for, for electricity. So the, the portable towers, fortunately, we don't, we don't have, we haven't had too much experience with this, but there, you know, there will come a day where we're going to have something happen in the evening, aside from an event, you know, where we need light out in the field, you know, storm clear, clean, cleanup, stuttering this morning, storm cleanup, uh, you know, incidents with the police department where they need something. So I think it's a good add for us. Um, and we're not, we're not bound, we are bound to maintenance on, on the diesel generators, but, uh, we're not bound to a monthly cost. We don't have to worry about somebody turning the lights on and leaving them on, you know, that kind of thing. Um, yeah, I, I did like that idea, but, um, I think there was another issue where, uh, if EMC installs the lights, they will not install a switch. So they're on at night, off in the morning kind of thing. Uh, that was one of the issues that we talked through with them too. Okay.
As part of like the Shamrock Park upgrades and downtown upgrades, we, we are going to be looking at the pre-existing lighting in Shamrock Park, whether we can improve it. If we end up building a stage or pavilion, that will most likely have lighting associated with it. So it's been part of the preliminary discussions to say, how can we improve lighting with those pre-existing projects that we're going to do in the park. But, but yeah, the dedicated lighting for the field probably be integrated with that plus.
Brandon, didn't we also talk about some kind of a path from here to, across Sonora Road with bricks or something to slow people down?
Yeah, that's part of SPOST, if, if it passes. So that, that's something, I'm glad you asked that, because that's, that's kind of a, the, the final point in this ARPA presentation. If SPOST twenty twenty-three does not pass today, um, we may come back and say, okay, scratch that. Let's pick a project from SPOST that did not pass and let's put some of this funding towards that. For instance, the stage facility over at Shamrock. That was about a two million dollar project, I think, that we had budgeted, went in about two million. Uh, we could probably get it done for less than that, but, um, we may very well come to you again and say, well, remember what we talked about at the retreat? We're going to try something else. So, um, I hope that doesn't happen, but if it doesn't, it's not the end of the world. So, um, but yeah, that, that improvement was part of SPOST. Tying that in together. All right. If there aren't any questions, I'll move on to staff discussions.
This was fantastic. It's, I know how many hours you all put into putting this stuff together. People in and out of your office, uh, providing this, this information and I, and I think it was great.
Thank you. And staff, yeah, they, they worked hard on helping me get this together, provided me with information. Um, and it's up to the minute. I mean, we were, we were meeting yesterday at three o'clock in my office going over this for today. So, um, we wanted to make sure y'all had everything you needed to make decisions. And again, you're not making decisions today, but we wanted to put together something that, for the ARPA funds, that, you know, got some things done for internally and for the citizens. So we appreciate the recognition. All right, personnel. Alright, personnel. Um, there's a couple of things that we're looking at on the horizon here for budgeting purposes. Um, number one, uh, Sierra's position, Sierra has been doing fantastic job since the day she got here, but, um, she's been working on her city clerk certification, and I believe she's about to start working on her records certification. Um, she already, in her current role, assists Dee with what she does with OTCs, with, uh, open records and things like that. She also, of course, handles accounts payable, she handles our front desk receptionist work, but she's also serving as the secretary for the DDA, which is essentially the clerk. She keeps the minutes and, and she's doing that work, um, putting the, the agenda together. And as part of my, I'm, I'm really big on succession planning. Um, so what I would like to see next year is, is funding in the budget to promote her to assistant clerk. Her day-to-day op, op, operations, her, her job role will not change drastically, other than the fact that she has the certification. Um, she's already taken on additional duties via the DDA, helping Dee, those kinds of things. Um, I want to recognize her for that and for her certification and promote her to, uh, assistant clerk. Um, so this isn't a, this isn't gonna be a huge cost, but I think it's important to recognize her for what she's done to improve her marketability for us and, uh, her ability to do what she does. Questions on that? Alright, next, uh, accounting specialist. Um, right now, we have two staff members in, in, uh, finance, we have Dee, and we, I'm sorry, we have Sandy, and we have Bridget. Um, and they also, so, you know, Sandy's handling a lot of HR stuff, they both handle, uh, the finance things. Um, it's a lot to do, and you all heard our audit, in our audit report, uh, last month, um, for several years now, we've been dinged on our audits because we don't have enough staff to cover separation of duties. Um, uh, and the, the, one of the important things about it, separation of duties, is it's designed to help prevent fraud and theft. Now, I don't have any second thoughts about any of our staff when it comes to that, but, um, you know, we've, we've got to have measures in place to be as safe as possible. I think it would be extremely hard for any one person here to steal money from the town, um, you know, but, um, and I think we have measures in place that would catch it, but, you know, we keep getting those dings and we keep getting mentions that, you know, we don't have, you know, the staffing in there. And then I can see it from a day-to-day standpoint, how, how hard they work, how much their workload is. Um, you know, HR has grown, we were at forty employees, that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start talking about benefits, separations and hiring, onboarding, uh, people having questions about, you know, their insurance, I've already mentioned benefits, um, H- HR has grown, it's, it's a really a, it's a, it's a big part of what they do, especially Sandy. Um, and then of course, all the funding that we're handling, we're handling a lot of money, and, or they are. So, and I will also say, uh, they both work very hard, but I know for a fact, I know for a fact, both of them stay after hours, um, but I think Sandy is kind of on a regular basis, is here after hours, and it's just trying to, to, to stay afloat, you know, to keep up with their workload. Um, I hit that wrong. So, just as a comparison, and th, this is not, this is not a scientific study, this is just a, a quick, dirty overview of what some comparable cities are doing. So we have seventy-seven-hundred population, uh, we have two finance staff, no HR staff. The city of Auburn has just a little bit bigger population, but they have two finance staff and two HR staff. The city of Coming is sixty-six-hundred people, they have three finance staff and two HR staff. Hampton is a little bit bigger than we are, they have four finance staff and one HR staff member. Hawkinsville have fifty-three-hundred employees, or I'm sorry, fifty-three-hundred population. Um, they do have a lot of, that study, I, I looked at that study, I was looking at, um, at people, they, they have an incredible amount of employees for the number of people they have. I don't know what's up there, but they have three finance staff and no HR. I would assume that one of those finance staff members handles HR. And then the city of Tacoa, just a little bit bigger than we are, three finance staff members and one HR staff member. So just some things to consider there. Um, additional considerations, we added Sandy's position when she was the, the accounting specialist, uh, back in two thousand sixteen. Back then, we had a budget of about three-point-five million dollars. Uh, now we're, we have a budget of eleven-point-five million, that's a lot of money to handle. Um, then you add in the other funds, ARPA, SPOSS, probably two SPOSS, uh, grants, and all the other things that they manage. Um, the DDA, that's right, that's a totally different thing there. So, uh, we've added more employees, not many, but we do, we have gone from thirty-three to thirty-nine employees. Um, that alone requires a lot of, lot from HR. Um, in two thousand sixteen, when the second position was added, we had nineteen capital projects. Uh, the current budget contains thirty-two capital projects, and if, if SPOSS, no doubt, next budget year regardless of SPOSS is gonna have capital projects, and the SPOSS would add even more. Um, so that's a lot of money for two people to handle, especially when they're also responsible for HR and all the other things. Um, they also manage all the grants that we, we have to manage, um, and all the active funds, and also keeping us, uh, in compliance with, with, uh, GASB regulations and HR laws. It's a lot, i- i- it really is, it's hard to put it all on paper, um, but i- it's a lot for them to handle. So my, my request in the next budget is going to be adding a second Bridget, if you will, so another accounting specialist. Don't have all the, all the numbers for you right now, we will put all that together, we will put in our budget request. Um, but that is, um, kind of where we are. Um, and this is just another list of, you know, eleven active funds, six bank accounts, and all that entails with that, you know, reconciliations, positive pay, all of that, SPOSS, multiple grants and loans, project accounting, departmental accounting, capital asset management, that's another big thing that we don't think about, they, they are responsible for making sure all of our capital assets are listed, properly accounted for and reported to our insurance. Uh, the DDA is on here, check runs, uh, credit card payment accounting and management, budget prep, uh, this is a big time of year for them, and so, um, you know, it's, it's like, they get one thing wrapped and they go into the next thing. They'll, they'll finish budget, and then it'll be time to start the account of, of the, the audit process, and then audit's done, and then it's time to start looking at budget again. And in between all of that, they've got to pay the bills, um, answer HR requests and all that, so it, it really is a lot. So, um, that'll be coming in the next budget request. Um, Sandy, do you have anything to add on that? So, any?
Craps it up.
Okay. Um, any questions from y'all? I know that, I know, look, I know, I don't take coming to you all lightly, for personnel lightly, I don't. Um, it's a big responsibility, it's a big cost, uh, in some cases. I don't take it lightly, and I wouldn't ask if I didn't think it was necessary. Um, that's just not my nature. So, um, you know, we'll, we'll put a packet together that, that has all the costs and let you digest that as soon as we can.
I'm exhausted, I'm exhausted just looking at everything they have to do.
It, it, it's a lot, I mean, and, and we all get pulled in a lot of different directions, we all, we all say, you know, everybody wears a couple of different hats here, and we do. Um, but keeping the monies right and keeping our benefits and our, our employees happy, that's hugely important, so.
Sandy's been doing that for a long time, I can attest, many nights going home from work here and locking up the door with her still here. And, um, we appreciate everything you really do, Sandy. Thank you. And then Bridget's been a great help to her, thank God for her, but, uh, I think another person is most definitely without question needed.
Alright, well, we're gonna move on to another, this is more of a Phillip, uh, discussion. Um, you just tell me what you want to add.
So, um, just in pub, the public works realm, we, Scott and I have been, uh, and Devin, you know, we've, we've kind of been reviewing all of the duties that have to happen over on the public work side, when we're talking about sewer, when we're talking about stormwater, talking about project management, all of those things. And, um, you know, we, we have similarly a lot of functions that need to be performed. Current staffing levels have remained about the same since two thousand thirteen, um, till, of course, the recent addition of our, uh, maintenance workers. And, um, we've increased by approximately three thousand residents since, uh, since two thousand five. Um, in fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, we had five major projects that were completed, uh, at appro, approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in construction. I won't go over any more than that because you saw from Brandon, kind of where, where we are on that, from a project management perspective. And public work, Scott, you know, mostly is handling the project management of those items. Um, and, uh, the demand to be able to focus on project management is, uh, being considered for the next, uh, many years, uh, regardless of whether or not the two thousand twenty-three SPOSS opens up or not. So, we did a similar comparative, uh, staffing chart for, um, public works employees, um, and this is, you know, it's not a exactly one-for-one look at, uh, cities, you know, all cities are a little different, our service areas are different, our population area is different. And so, Scott actually put together this chart, um, just looking at staffing, comparative staffing that seemed appropriate per service area and population. So, just looking at the town and other cities that are similarly sized, it, funny enough, there are not a lot of towns that are in the seven-thousand-person range, it's usually a little bit below or a little bit over. Um, but we, we do have actually a pretty large service area for a town our size, you know, we're twelve-point-eight square miles, pretty big. Um, and so we have a lot of roads, we have a lot of things that we maintain, a lot of projects that need to be done, culverts that need to be replaced, everything that comes with that. So, um, you know, just looking at the staff comparison chart of Palmetto, which is at four thousand people in Jonesboro, um, you know, they have, you know, in terms of staff per kind of square miles of service area, they have, you know, one-point-two staff per square mile, which is about two, two-point-four times us, um, three, uh, six-point-two for Jonesboro, and you can kind of go through that chart and kind of see, um, where, you know, we, we do keep things going very efficiently in the town, based on our, our staffing level. So, if you have any questions about that chart, we can. But the, the position that we're proposing is a public work specialist, um, the title may potentially change, but there are three main areas of focus for this position. Um, there's public works, project management, which we've found an increase in, stormwater and sewer. Um, stormwater regulations, I'll kind of, kind of go from back to front, sewer and stormwater, because these are, these are newer items for the town. In terms of our expanded infrastructure, the level of maintenance that we need to take care of them, regulations that apply for those items. Of course, sewers expanded in the downtown area beyond where it has, it was before, so we have a much larger sewer footprint. We've been, um, we've been trying to keep up with the maintenance of that system, and, you know, in digging into more of that, and Scott can probably speak more to this, but there's a lot of sewer maintenance that we need to be doing, especially purchasing our capacity from Fulton County, because we are now in a contract with them. And so doing the right maintenance to our sewer system is basically part of our contract with them, and there's a lot that's involved with that. So reviewing regular reports from the pump stations and the systems, SCADA, Red Zone, Evaku, I know y'all have heard of these, you know, as they come before you, you know, we've got bills associated with each one of these. Maintain an active list of grease traps and maintenance inspections, this is required by Fulton County. If we are not keeping up with all of our businesses that have grease traps and getting manifests from them, then we're liable for, you know, I don't know if you've heard of, uh, fat birds, but they're essentially fat buildups and deposits in sewer systems that can cause, uh, serious inefficiencies and potentially damage. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're monitoring those grease levels, um, and we are staying on top of those restaurants. It's actually a lot to stay on top of them, they have to do regular reporting. Scott, is it on a, a monthly, a three-month basis that they have to basically put together those manifests?
Quarterly, I believe.
Okay, quarterly, so, so quarterly, each of them, and we need to track that. And, um, Fulton County's gonna be asking for it, they've already asked for that, um, and it's, uh, it's a, it's actually a pretty large item to keep track of. Overseeing the sanitary sewer inspection program, uh, and infrastructure inventory. We have, uh, you know, between sewer and stormwater, we have thousands of infrastructure, um, uh, pieces to our infrastructure. So maintaining them and keeping track of them is incredibly important, and it takes a lot of time. Um, coordinating pump station and generator routine maintenance with Coweta County, they do maintenance on our system. You know, right now, Scott gets pulled out to do that. Um, and Scott's a very, of course, high-level employee that we have working on all kinds of manner of engineering projects, so to have to go unlock a gate, to go get into the pump station, you know, that takes a lot of time away from being able to coordinate his efforts on project management, larger things that we, we want worked on. Um, assisting, uh, Scott with Fulton County inflow and infiltration reports, again, more reporting, it's very time-consuming, and it's, these are greater requirements that we're having to, to maintain. Um, and then the rest of those are the same. So assisting field sewer inquiries, customer service complaints and outreach, we do get a lot of that, and we're getting more, and we anticipate more, because we've expanded our system. We're planning on expanding our capacity. Stormwater, um, we have over twenty-five-hundred stormwater structures in town, managing the inventory of that is tremendous, uh, just being able to keep, uh, keep up with them, inspect them, we have to do that annually, and it's, every time we have to go inspect a structure, right, we have to get in a car, we have to go out, and we have to physically look in that structure, we have to look through it. Currently Devon, um, is charged with taking care of that, but it takes a lot of her time, and she has a lot of reporting that she's doing as well from the state. And the state requirements as a local issuing authority for, um, stormwater, which is what we are, we are subject to all the state, you know, rules and regulations that get applied over time, and they just keep increasing, they keep increasing the reporting, how frequently we have to do it, what's included. Um, and it's actually one of those areas of, um, state, you know, changes that's probably most frequent. I mean, I don't see it on the planning side nearly as much as she sees it on the environmental side. So there's occasionally an update to the Planning Procedures Act in Georgia. It, multiple times a year, sometimes it's a change to environmental and stormwater requirements, so she's got to keep up with a lot. Assisting with inquiry, inquiries, um, service complaints and things of that nature, uh, maintaining the records associated with that stormwater, conforming applicants to town requirements, um, coordinating with Devon on, uh, pond inspections, annual maintenance documentation, and GILID, um, maintenance, which is, uh, the maintenance checklist that we have for stormwater, and in, uh, assisting Devon with inspections and development sites for compliance. So, just trying to have, help Devon keep up with the workload that she has to do, on top of all of her major reporting that she has to do to the state and some of the state waters determination she has to do with development. And we're seeing much more, uh, at least on the environmental side, very heavy, um, kind of development-related, um, work for her. So especially on the commercial side, um, going out and determining if there are waters of the state, checking on that site, making sure that they are keeping up with their, uh, the proper stormwater management, and she does, she does a detailed review of each one of those as they come in, site plans, um, she's checking calculations, she's making sure that they're putting in the right kind of bio retention areas, that they're putting in a good faith effort. Um, and being able to determine if somebody's putting in a good faith effort requires a uh, very detailed review of all of what they've presented to you, sometimes a hundred-and-sixty-page, uh, set of documents in a stormwater, um, maintenance agreement or a set of plans or something like that, so it's very detailed. And then from a project management perspective, being able to take some, uh, load off of Scott to be able to focus on a lot of these new projects that we want to accomplish. Um, coordinating the GIS system for town infrastructure, that's, you know, everything, we're talking about sewer, stormwater, but, you know, all of the signs that we have to maintain, all of the, um, the, you know, the stop bars, everything that's associated with town infrastructure, being able to inventory that appropriately so that we can quickly respond to it, we can quickly update the status of those, those, those items. Coordinating minor sewer and stormwater infrastructure projects, so this position, being able to do project management on those minor projects, uh, reviewing all utility permit applications and coordinating, um, inspections on those. I mean, the utility companies are always all over town, you know, they're constantly doing work, they're crawling all over town, they're doing, you know, direct bore, and it's sometimes very difficult to keep up with them, to make sure that they're doing those things properly, that they're getting inspected, that they're applying for the permits appropriately, because what we don't want to do is for them to come into town very quickly, do a project. Because what we don't want to do is for them to come into town, very quickly do a project, direct bore under the road, and then compromise the integrity of the road. It happens a lot and it happens with cities that can't keep up with utility work because they're not going to stop, right? They're going to provide whatever utility service is to their customer. And if we fall behind, you know, yes, they're supposed to check with us. Yes, that's kind of a penalty, but we have to be able to keep up. And they're really not going to stop that work. They're going to ask for forgiveness as opposed to permission if they're waiting. And we don't want, we don't want the detrimental side effects to that occurring. Coordinating miscellaneous projects as assigned by Scott. I mean, there's just a ton of just little things. It's like death by a thousand needles sometimes with the daily tasks of maintaining literally the entire town's infrastructure. And then assisting Scott with coordinating RFP and bidding processes for Public Works projects. It takes a lot of time. And I'll just say, we're very lucky to have Scott to be able to coordinate that. He's a pro, he's an expert. Like you could write a book on how to go through the RFP process, you know, for a government. Knows the details, knows all of what's required there and does a very good job with it. So to be able to keep him, keep the ability for us to maintain that level of service and our ability to publish and bid out projects is very important. And to have somebody else assist with those smaller ones and then assist Scott in the preparation of the larger ones is very important. So I know it kind of went on, it's a lot of duties that we have here. These are a lot of items that, yes, we're keeping up with. There are some of these things that we are not able to keep up with. Especially just grease traps as an example. It's very difficult for us to follow up with because it's the communication with, you know, a couple dozen different entities and you've got to follow up with them. And they're not wanting to do this. They don't want to put together the grease trap manifest and they have to call somebody to come get it pumped and they have to get that report put together. And we have to stay on them and it's very time-consuming. And, but it's also very necessary. And it's one of those things that's very easy to fall back behind on or, you know, we found that we haven't communicated with them or we did, we didn't follow up because they're not wanting to do it. And, you know, we're stuck in this back and forth and somebody's not on them. So we get a lot of those types of things happening in the public works realm because it's not just maintaining our infrastructure. It's a little bit of making sure other people are maintaining their infrastructure and that we're keeping up with the ever-changing and kind of expanding state requirements on this thing.
Okay. Are there any questions? Lot to digest. Those are good presentations. I guess I can move on to.
Unless there are any questions or comments, I think, yeah, or is there anything you wanted to add? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Scott.
No, sir, I'm fine.
Okay.
I do want to add, I did make a note in my slides here to just brief you on this. Retirement study. A couple of years ago, we did a retirement study. We went from a standard retirement plan where I think the minimum age was 65, something like that, to retire. We changed it to a rule of 70 with a minimum age of 55. There was a study involved to get us to the point where we could do that. I've been made aware that a lot, a couple of, at least a couple of surrounding municipalities have further improved their retirement plans since then. What we have right now is a, what they call a one and a quarter percent multiplier in our plan. So basically, the easiest way to explain that is you get a one and a quarter percent of your salary for every year you've worked. And then your salary is based on your highest three to five years. I can't remember, it's five years, your highest five years of service. You do that multiplier, one and a quarter times 20 years. And then you take your percentage of income and that's your retirement pay. We're at one and a quarter. There are cities that are, you know, around us going to two and two and a half percent. So that is a tremendous difference when you're talking about somebody who's been working for, you know, any amount of time. We have some employees who, you know, are wanting to retire but can't retire because it just isn't financially beneficial to them to retire. And that's not to say that the town should be 100% responsible for their retirement. I mean, everybody, I believe, should have some sort of supplement if they can. But as from a recruiting, retention and competition standpoint, I think it's important that we at least look at what our options are. And we can't look at those options without another actuarial study. So in the budget, I'll be requesting funding for that. This is not to change the retirement next year, but it's to fund the study that will tell us, okay, what it will cost us to change if we're going to change. The last study, I believe, was $2,500. That may have gone up. I'll check with our retirement folks and find out what that's going to be. But I think it's important to at least approach the subject and look at what our options are. All right, that's all I had.
Thank you. First of all, Nikki, congratulations on your permanent appointment with the Fayette County Development Authority. It was a very good choice. And so are you going to be presenting today? All right. All right.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity. Tracy and I were just chatting about it a moment ago that my understanding is that previously when the Development Authority has come to you, it has been to ask you for money. Am I correct in that? Yes, we are not asking you for any money today.
Yes.
So we do want to give you an update of kind of what's going on with this. As you will remember, you got a check back in maybe August where we appreciate your support of the Development Authority over the last six years in funding us. When we were able to close that deal this summer, we were able to write back to our funders the sixth year. We ask, if you remember, if you'll go back to 2016, we asked that everybody partner with us for five years. It took us six, so we apologize for that extra year. But we wanted to say thank you for your support and send that back. Just a minute, do you mind if I tell the rest of the council who I am? You and I know it too.
You go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Nikki Van Der Slies. I am the new president and CEO of the Fayette County Development Authority. I spent the last seven years on the authority as its vice chair. I spent my career in community and economic development at the state, local and regional level. And came home seven years ago because I had my first child and I was a stay-at-home mom for seven years and enjoyed that. My husband and I live on the south end of the county. We have two little girls. And when the board asked me if I would be willing to serve in an interim capacity, I told them, yes, I would, after some gnashing of teeth. And then they said, Tracy asked me, he was the first to ask the question. And I said that I would consider doing it permanently. He said, what changed your mind? And I'll tell you, I had an opportunity from November to January to see where we are as an organization and where we are as a community. And it's an exciting time to be in Fayette County. There's a lot of good things coming ahead. And quite honestly, when we started looking at who to replace, who to hire as a permanent, it would have put us years behind because by the time you hire somebody, you get them onboarded, they learn the personalities within our community. And I didn't think we had that time to offer. And so I can't tell you how long I will be here, but for some period of time. And I'm excited about that. We kicked off in November with a planning retreat for our board and to kind of see where we were going to go. We were in a new position. We had been for the last six years marketing the 600 acres of land, among other pieces within the county. But we found ourselves without a whole lot to market. And when you're a development authority, that's a challenging position to be in. And so what were we going to do? What does it look like? We held that session and we held one in November, a full workday, and then another one in December. And one of the things that was very clear to the board in that session was that we, one, we had told you that we were going to find a path to financial independence and we were able to do that. And so we have some very, I guess, pretty firm plans about what we're going to do with that. We were able to take of the money that we made. We were able to take a percentage of that and set it aside for our funding in perpetuity. So not only am I not here this year to ask you for money, I hope we will never be back to ask you for money. But, so we're going to do that with a piece of the money. And then the other piece of the money is going to go into an investment fund. And the earnings that come off of that, it is the board's vision that those would fund projects within the county. And so they very clearly identified a stakeholder group and that was the five municipalities that funded the Development Authority, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education. And that those would be the recipients of what we are putting together now is a revolving loan fund and a grant program. And those seven would be eligible for those funds. So there will be funds available. We hope that we'll be rolling that out in July, July 1 is what we're shooting for. Don't hold me to it, but that's where we're trying to get to. In January and February, one of the things the board said that they wanted to do was have a facilitator come in and facilitate focus groups for us. And I think many of you participated in that, thank you. We got 167 responses in those four sessions and then a listening session that was open to the public. We are going through those. We'll present them to our board this week. And then we're going through and things that didn't necessarily pertain to the Development Authority, we're going to give that feedback back to each of the organizations with which it lives. And you'll be getting some of that, as y'all were mentioned a lot, for good things, good things. As I said, we have had land previously, historically, that we have been able to market for our community, for new industry to come in. We are somewhat pivoting in that we don't have a whole lot of land. I'll tell you that I get calls or emails with requests for information for projects. And we simply can't accommodate what they need. And so we are looking at, very earnestly looking at product development and what that looks like. Are there opportunities in the county? Land that may be on the market or may not be on the market that may be available in the next five to 10 years? Because we've got to always have something that we're working towards. So we're working on our product development. That's a key issue for the board. We have, on our existing industry, we have added staff in that capacity so that we can work with the industries that are already here. We're focusing on industries with either manufacturing sector area or more than 50 employees. So we're not, we're not in the business of small mom-and-pop businesses necessarily, unless they're in the manufacturing sector. We're kind of leaving that to the chamber for them to work with those. We have that one staff person and then part of my time is allocated to that. We're doing some workforce development. More information to come, but it's pretty exciting about how we're working with the Board of Education on that. And then our film Fayette. Melissa does a fabulous job for us on that capacity. And we're looking for how we can measure those, the impact of film in Fayette County. As I'm sure you are all aware that the growth at Trilith has been phenomenal and they just continue to grow and grow. So that's having a significant impact. I did an analysis a couple of months ago about the economic, the tax base from Trilith and not the town of Trilith, just the studio side of it. In the nine years prior to Trilith, then Pinewood, purchasing that property, the whole of that land paid $100,000, approximately $100,000 in taxes in nine years. In the nine years since they located there, they paid $4.2 million in taxes. And so that was a pretty good return on investment. I think that we would call that a success story, as would most others. We have some existing industries that are expanding. Gershheimer is, if you go down 74 in Peachtree City, you'll see that they are moving dirt there. They're going through an expansion on site there with potential for other expansions to come. So back to that product development, we've got to have that in order to make it happen. And as you well know, Tyrone is our option for future product development. So I thank you for your vision of what you want to be. I started my career in downtown development and we used to say that you have to have a vision of where you want to go or else you're never going to get there. And y'all know who you are and who you want to be. And so I commend you for saying, this is what we want our community to look like and sticking to that. Doesn't mean I won't call you and ask you for larger buildings, but I commend you for where you are going and keeping your sense of place. Organizationally, we have released two RFPs in the last two months, three months, I guess, for accounting services, to add accounting services to us. But we are also in the process of interviewing, we'll be interviewing next week, financial services advisors to help us with those funds so that we can manage those well. We have a meeting this Thursday and then a call meeting to hear those proposals next Thursday. So I imagine there will be other RFPs. And Scott, did I just hear that you're really good at writing those?
He loves it.
Where I see it.
Oh, okay, well.
Well, for a fee.
Yes, for a fee. So I'm happy, I'm happy to answer. That's all that I have for you. Oh, let me add one more thing. QTS has gone through their planning and zoning process and gotten approval in Fayetteville. And we are moving quickly with them on their process to start breaking ground. And my understanding is they have a pretty strong candidate for their first tenant in their first building. So all I have, if you have questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them if I can.
I'll start with a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the revolving loan fund, have you established parameters, the scope for candidates or who those likely loaner or loanes would be?
The recipients. So we have, it would be that stakeholder group of seven, that those would be the eligible recipients. We will not be funding any nonprofits at this time. We felt like that we needed to, we needed to stay focused in the very early stages, get it off the ground and then we can reevaluate as we move forward.
Okay. My second question is, when everybody heard the film industry was coming to Fayette, we, along with many others, were given the impression that there would be all types of ancillary businesses that we would be seeing in Tyrone. We haven't. Not much. There are people and there are, you know, films being shot here or there. Not much ancillary business. How can we better market ourselves to businesses to be located in, you know, kind of the outer edges of Tyrone, not necessarily downtown? But how can we better market ourselves for that purpose?
Well, I think that the data tells the story. And so that's what we're in the process of. We started in January collecting the data on what is our, what are we doing? And we're, I've got to schedule a meeting today with Trilith to go through the metrics. The only community that really does a good job of tracking those metrics in the state of Georgia is Savannah. I've asked several partners in other communities and they said that we don't really have a way to track it. And so we're looking at how can we develop that. Melissa has worked with, I think, y'all on the ordinance side of it. We want to look across the community and see what are our opportunities to serve all of our communities when it comes to film. So really, probably later this year, early part of next year, we will have, this is where we're going to go with a film roadmap. But I want to, I want to be able to tell the story based on the data of this is the impact that it's had, whether there are one-off filming in Tyrone or there are a whole day somewhere else, I mean, a whole month somewhere else in the county, that we can really tell that story. And I believe that we've got to have that data to say, this is why, this is what's going on. Because there's a lot of filming that's happening that nobody even really knows about. Now, from the other side of what I think you're asking is, what is, how do we build out that industry? I think that when we can tell the story of this is what we have, then it allows us to go after the attraction of those, to recruit them to come here. But until we can, until we know what we've got, we can't really do that.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about filming. That stuff will grow organically. I mean, you know, modest set storage or post-production type office space, that kind of thing. As you can tell, I don't even know what they are. So how do I know how to market it if I don't know what they are?
Well, and I think that, I think that a lot of that comes like per production. So they come in and they bring, and they've got it and they're here for, they're wherever they are for three months or six months. It's not a, they're not a permanent long-term because they come in based on production and what that need is. So I would say having, having So I would say having, having space that is flexible for that would probably be very beneficial.
And we know what type of space that is?
Not right now.
Any warehouse space?
We, we know what they need for filming, but we really don't, I mean, we don't have what they need for the other things right now. So.
I can speak, we have, we do have a develop, this is something that has been brought to us, you know, going towards Powers Court at the very beginning on the left side where there was going to be an office park there. We've subsequently rezoned a lot of that land for highway commercial. There's a gentleman that wants to, he's actually in the site plan process of developing three separate buildings, about 90,000 square feet total of office and kind of like flex space. And his, one of his main users, he said, was specialty trade contractors and film industry people. Those are the people that are talking to him. So we do get, we do get some of, I'm in, I'm anticipating that some of that space would be used for them, but it's kind of that type of space. It's just flex space with office and floor space. So perhaps that's the type of thing that they're looking for.
And the competing.
And the infrastructure is coming our way as opposed to, as opposed to coming down 74 and taking a left out on Sandy Creek and, and doesn't really get to us. Infrastructure, meaning whether that's some type of fiber optic or whatever. We're getting that infrastructure to be able to support it?
Yeah, I mean, we, sewer is kind of the bigger discussion. This development wants to be able to tie onto sewer. That was really the key to be able to do it. But the town actually has really good broadband connections. So I think, I think really they're just looking for, they're looking for kind of sewer-like.
And I think one of the challenges is that so often things come to market and they're taken immediately.
Yeah.
So it's like, how do you hold it just for that, for that sector when anything that comes on, I mean, on the market is taken pretty quickly?
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
You.
Thank you, Tracy, for serving on that board authority. We appreciate you. Okay, Philip?
Okay, so I'm going to try and do a quick review of community development, just kind of where we want to go. Got, you know, community development now kind of is just kind of the encompassing term for the DDA, Building Department Code Enforcement, Planning and Zoning. So 2023, 2024 goals and objectives. We have a couple of main goals and objectives. Some of these you'll, will probably be familiar from last year. There are things that we either started that we want to finish or the things that we talked about that we want to, that we want to do. But revising the fee schedule for the town, and it's a big project that we've been working on. Catherine was working on that and we're going to get Audress to kind of continue working on that. Revising code enforcement ordinances, we had a lot of discussion about that last year and we're still going to be continuing to work on those this year. So you'll see quite a few text amendments kind of coming forth in that regard. And then downtown improvements. Project management is going to be big because regardless of whether SPOSS passes today, we have a lot of planned projects between ARPA and a lot of the funds that Brandon talked about and continuing finishing up some projects from 2017. We also have, and this is kind of going over to the other column there with matching grant activity, we have a lot of opportunity for grants in this arena. And we are applying again this year to the, the LCI program to start our streetscape. So they have funds available, not planning funds like we did for the actual master plan, but these are going to be funds that go towards implementation. So these will be funds that actually get the streetscape in the preliminary design process. So we'd be doing all, all the required things that would need to happen anyway. So we'd be talking about surveying, understanding utility locations, understanding topography changes and what streetscaping elements are going to fit within our right-of-way at different sections, cross-sections of Sonoya Road. So we, we've applied for that, you know, it's a, it's an 80/20 match and we applied for $200,000. Contribution from the town. That money, we would utilize some of our SPOSS funding to potentially even match for those funds because it's accomplishing the SPOSS goals. Need updates to development ordinances, so we, we're still working on all of those things. They're hard to get to with the every day that comes across our desk, but continuing to improve, we've done a first wave update to downtown architectural and overlay standards. We've got a second round of that that we'd like to bring you to kind of finalize that out. Some parking reform updates, some residential zoning classification updates for downtown, just to kind of help some of our existing, we have a lot of existing non-conforming buildings. And just as an example, all of the historic houses that we love on the south end of downtown, all of those homes, none of them could be built today and all of them are considered non-conforming, like they're not allowed. But they are actually some of the most beloved homes. So taking a really good look at what our zoning looks like for downtown residential very specifically, and specifically for pre-existing homes, how can we, how can we find a zoning classification that kind of eliminates a lot of the non-conforming nature that they just in and allow that to be replicated? Because we want to see some of that replication. I think a lot of people would say, yeah, all of those houses on this, you know, as you're coming in on the left side of the street downtown, those are, those are cute. Those are beautiful, kind of harkening to, you know, what the town, what we want the town to look like and what it used to look like. So we'll be looking at a lot of that. So any questions about?
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We've talked before about maybe a historical society or talk more about that.
Yes, so we can apply, and I, I, we, this is actually part of our goal, is to, we don't have anything that would be on the National Register of Historic Places currently, but you can apply to basically establish a historic district. And it's actually not a terribly detailed process, but I would like to establish that district for the downtown area. It would not, it would not encompass everything that's downtown. It really is encompassing the concentration of historic, you know, structures and buildings that we have. It would probably be the south half of what we consider the town center district. But applying for that district, I think, is important. It does, it doesn't allow us to have historic preservation. There's, there's a lot of steps that go to having, basically being able to do historic preservation and having a board that regulates that or that monitors that. But it is a first step in allowing us to establish the district, have it present and kind of take those next incremental steps that allow us to start creating ordinances. Because historic preservation ordinances themselves, there, there is a lot of state law that's wrapped up in that, so we want to make sure that we have an incremental.
Oldest or historic?
In terms of homes, I know we have at least a couple of homes that date to 1900. But historic homes are actually considered, is that, there's a definition and I'm probably going to get it wrong, but it's anything really kind of like, I think some, some things that were built even in the 1960s are considered historic. That designation is just a certain, you know, number of age. So, but it's basically 1950s, 60s and prior would be, you know, concentration of buildings in that. Basically how that district gets drawn.
That, then the buildings really north of us are also included in that.
Some structures that are.
And Ozzias and Austin Street, but Monday.
Yeah, but potentially, potentially. It, it does, there's a number that I would have to, I, I would have to do some more research and get back to you on that exact number of what be considered historic. And it would be, you know, that concentration of buildings. So the south side is definite, downtown area is definitely the more, that's the very clear area of where a historic district could be.
Him and, and other buildings I know are, are 50s, the corner store, that. Aren't they Gloria?
They are.
Yeah. So yeah, I think any, kind of, you know, in doing a preliminary research, because we've done as a part of a lot of our planning efforts, we've, we've done a heat map, so to speak, of homes and properties by age and certainly basically going from Castlewood Road South, encompassing the. South are, is kind of where we have a concentration. Yeah, we could, we, that's definitely something that can be pursued. And, you know, it, that's the type of thing that also, as long as it's with authorization of council, you know, staff can pursue that, a special interest group, group can also pursue that. Usually, you know, you start with like a historic society of sorts and they kind of go from.
Thank you, Philip.
This is just, when we're talking about downtown development, streetscaping improvements, these are just some local examples of just some modest streetscape improvements in what they do. City of Clarkston, you can see on the left the top before and after of their streetscaping project. Solomon Street and Griffin before and after, what those, what that kind of does to change the, the feel of the street. This is what we're going to be trying to accomplish downtown. So improved sidewalks, improved kind of curb and gutters, better pedestrian experience, slows down the cars. If you're going down Clarkston Street before, I mean, you do feel like you could, it's just wide open. So you are more apt to speed. As a walker, you're going to be jaywalking most certainly to dart between cars. And afterwards, there, there are crosswalks, it feels lower. Just some more pictures here of multi-use path examples because here in the town, it's not just about a sidewalk and a narrow sidewalk and having those. It's about being able to facilitate multiple modal types, right? So somebody that's walking, pushing a stroller, somebody that's on a bike, somebody that's on a golf cart. And so looking at infrastructure examples, good infrastructure examples that we can incorporate into the downtown area for all of those modal types is important. La Grange for Georgia 14, they did a big change. It's kind of actually hard to see in that picture, but that sidewalk was widened pretty considerably. It was, it was a 10-foot sidewalk for multi-use purposes, so they have a lot of cyclists and walkers. Done improvements in the right-of-way. And so that's. And on the right is just a multi-use path example, right? So if we have golf carts, you know, one of the big learning lessons from places like Peachtree City is being able to kind of, if we're, we're building a wider path, give people some direction. So there is a center line to that. Drive a golf cart on the left side, going towards stroller, just don't, you know, you've got a place, you've got a place. And just having a little bit of that control. So that's, that would seem to be a good multi-use path example. That's a cycle track, so mostly for cyclists, but the design could be incorporated for golf carts, pedestrians, cyclists, pretty, pretty well. Moving on to the DDA. We've got some main kind of objectives for the DDA, just in general. And this is probably true for all downtown development authorities. But promotion, economic vitality, organization and design, these are the four big things that the DDA wants to forward, that downtown development authorities in general want to afford in their downtown area. So promotion is the DDA's role to celebrate the positive image of downtown and highlight why Tyrone is special and a lot of Tyrone's culture is along Sonoya Road right here. So promoting that. Economic vitality, being committed to making the most of what makes Tyrone unique. Kind of the same thing, but as promotion, but how that actually helps our local economy. So promoting our local economy, creating an economy of this place in downtown is very important. Organization, serving the backbone organization of, DDA serves as the backbone organization of downtown economic interests, business owners, residents, and is, you know, kind of an advocate for resources and opportunities that will forward this area and be the heart of the community, right? That's what it serves as, is the central heart of the community. Amrock Park is the central gathering place. This is where we do our government organizations, where you go to the post office, where you go to the library, where you celebrate Founder's Day, right? Where you celebrate the town. So we, we want to be able to focus on that. And then design, the design of buildings, design of the street, any of their projects, like the fire station, a design that enhances the aesthetic appeal and pedestrian-friendly nature of downtown, right? Making it a place for people, making a place where you want to stop and you want to get out of your car, where you admire what it looks like, you want to walk around, you want to. So those are the four kind of main objectives at the DDA. Not, they're not new objectives, they're kind of the same objectives that we started the DDA with, but just as a reminder of going forward into this next year, what, what those main objectives are. And then we have some specific goals, DDA. Of course, fire station redevelopment, our first Friday events, those are the two big ones, and then continuity and growth. So what's the DDA look like going forward into the future? Fire station redevelopment's looking at three different loan opportunities from GMA, FCDA, Georgia Cities Foundation. And they're seeking a well-established restaurant use that will also be a development partner to redevelop the site. We are in the final draft version of that RFQ to look for that tenant. The DDA will be hopefully approving that at the next meeting. So we're moving along quickly with that. So we will put that out for finding a partner. We're going to be applying for grants and we're going to be trying to basically get the resources together necessary to redevelop that site. And it's a really exciting time. First Friday events, they were very successful last year. We anticipate them to be successful this year, well-attended. I think we have some, a really great lineup of basically concerts for the, at least the first five of them. So May 5th, we've got the Motowners, June 2nd, Jackie Pelfrey, July 7th, Men of SAE, August 4th, Hunter Callahan, and September is movie night. And each of those nights have a theme. We have the DDA's Events Committee and Linda and Christie from Recreation have been very dedicated in putting a lot of effort into these events, getting the details right, making sure that it's something that's going to attract families and attract, you know, townspeople to have a good time. And it's one of those, going back to the elements of objectives, you know, that's part of the promotion of downtown. And so that's what we're going to be doing. We're also going to be.
Is Hunter Callahan the one that's a Tyrone native?
I'm not sure. That's a good question.
Yeah. He grew up, I think, on Offal Crestwood.
Yeah, for these events, we're also going to be trying to focus on recapturing just a little bit of revenue. So some of the vendors will have some fees, things like that, just make them more sustainable to kind of continue them. Something that the DDA will be asking you for in this next FY is basically a transfer of those FCDA funds that used to go to the FCDA to go to the DDA. It's important because the DDA has its, in its infancy, we've used that seed money to get a lot of things started, kind of get things going. But there are now incurring, in incurring those like, those big things, like a new property and all of those, all the things that, that it takes to run the DDA, their annual operating expenses, so insurance, events, training, utilities. And steady streams of revenue from redevelopment projects will take time as they occur. So until the fire station is, got an act, is open for business, we're not going to be collecting any rental revenue from that project. Same thing for the events, you know, this is just the second year that we're doing events. If the events are going to become fully sustainable on their own, it just takes some time because you have to put a lot into those events to get, garner their success. So previous contributions and refunds from the FCDA will ensure continued overhead costs and then continuity in perpetuity, as well as allow for the DDA to set dollars aside for smaller redevelopment operations. This comes in the form of. This comes in the form of little repainting grants or landscaping grants or facade grants. They don't take a lot of money. In my training with, when I went to the advanced DDA training in Macon last year, there are, there are DDAs that give out, you know, $2,000 grants for landscaping the front. And it's a matching grant, so they have to be able to put up at least, you know, 20, 50, 80%, whatever it is. They, it's an incentivizing grant, and it's a small one that allows for some of these key properties that are in the downtown area. So just as an example, we're doing the streetscaping project in front of Spazano's. But if they wanted a small grant to be able to basically shift their parking area into outdoor dining space, you know, that wouldn't take a tremendous amount of money. Maybe they would apply for a $3,000 to $5,000 matching grant. They themselves would put up a similar amount and they would build a small deck or they would repave the outside to be a dining area. Something more productive for kind of a downtown environment. Or landscaping, or painting, or what have you. So it allows us to kind of do those small projects that allow people to see a little bit of progress and improvement, even if it's not a complete, you know, tear-down and redevelopment of the whole site. It's one of those small visual improvements that they're able to provide. So that's one of the big asks that will be coming before you for next FY, I think. I have any questions?
Okay. Campbell needs a body break.
No.
If you want to call a recess, that's perfectly fine.
We, we can take it real quick. Body break, do, do we need to adjourn for this? Okay.
I will mute the audio.
Good afternoon, or good morning, council. Good morning.
Good morning.
Talking it over here.
Scott, will you pull your microphone down just a hair, please?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay. Randy will take us to the first slide. To talk to you about our goals and public works. Start with transportation. Transportation, the roadside tree pruning project and tree removal project is an ongoing thing that we started a few years ago. It was something that Mitch talked to me about with the need because of the high intensity of traffic on some of the roads. So we're continuing that in, as part of our next goals. As far as sidewalk repairs, we're going to be looking at a couple of subdivisions, or actually a little more Maple Shade, Brooks and Laurel Forest. We'll be evaluating those for budget time and trying to get a feel for the number of repairs. But I'm thinking we probably can fit all four of those in to this year. The Tyrone Road Cart Path Project, just so you know, the land acquisition is complete. We have taken some of the, some of the, what do you call them, contingencies, I guess, of the, or stipulations of some of the land acquisition, has some minor things that we need to do to plan, so we're working on those and getting those done. We're hoping to get that out for bid in April, which means we would start somewhere as early, earliest would probably be like mid-June. One of the stipulations does deal with a property owner that has an event going on at their home in July, a very important event, a wedding. So depending upon when we get all the paperwork and everything like that, we're going to be working around that event. So we're not interfering with that. And so it's things like that. But anyway, it's moving forward now that we're past that hurdle of land acquisition. It's always a tough one. Road resurfacing, we're looking at several roads, kind of more out towards Briarwood area. Strawberry Lane, Laurel Lake Road, Ridge Road, Laurel Wood Drive. Foxford Run is kind of an interesting one. It never had the topping put on it. It's basically binder, and it's held up very well. There's a couple, like two little spots that we need to come inside there and patch. But I want to get that, get the topping on that, just so it starts, doesn't start degrading more now that we're starting to see a little degrade in certain areas. And then Huntington Road is one that's close to East Crestwood on the SR 74 to Sonora Road, part of East Crestwood. That road was originally a higher PCI, but it has taken a lot of damage over the last three years. So I have elevated it and doing Huntington is right there, so we're going to pick that one up. It's a short little cul-de-sac that's also got a lower PCI. And then Tyrone Road from SR 74 to the railroad tracks. This is something we've talked about before. I want to look at this one too with you, and talk to y'all a little bit about that for a second. There is a, a really bad section, right, when you come off the railroad track. There's a, two, what's it called, Ethel Lane, I think is the name of the, the old road that used to be there. There's that one little section there, has a very low PCI. The rest of it is actually a higher PCI from the 2021 study. Once again, we're seeing though that it's, it's getting more potholes and needing more repair. So it's one that I think that we should also go ahead and elevate and try to put into this year, since we have the surplus that we're also trying to work, work on reducing this year. So I'll be coming to you with that one included, unless anybody has an issue with that. As far as road preventive maintenance, we're going to look at crack ceiling. We also need to do more pavement markings throughout the town. Pavement markings aren't just striping, it also includes the raised pavement markers that actually sit in the road, the little yellow, white little domes, you say? Not the big turtle domes, but the little ones. TIP project for the Dogwood Trail. They have started the design on it now, is my understanding. We have a telephone conference next week on it. And we're going to get that, you know, finally moving along. It took, took a little while to get through the A and E procurement on it. The county, you know, that's basically under their control. And we've gotten through that stage, so hopefully we'll be into paving that next FY. Roadway signage replacement is an ongoing thing that we do every year. We go out, we try to evaluate the signs, make sure that reflectivity is good on them, and replace them as we see. We've done a lot of improvement on that the last three years. Intersection Study, Castlewood and Sonoya. The reason why I bring this up is because when we start doing streetscaping down, down town is part of the whole concept of the SPOLOST projects that we've talked about with streetscaping. If that gets extended where we're going all the way down to that area, it's something that we really need to look at at that time, because we don't want to build something that, that intersection we find is not going to be able to handle in five years from now or 10 years from now. We need to kind of get a feel for what that's going to look like based off of the evaluations and the traffic studies and things like that, and the projections that they make, that the traffic engineers make. So if SPOLOST goes through, that's probably going to be something that's going to probably get tied up into the SPOLOST project, but wanted to make you aware of it. We want to improve our permitting processes and how we do things. It takes a lot of time to go through these permits, whether it's utilities or driveways, they're the, the shorter and easier ones, or whether it's the big land disturbance site plans. And by doing so, a lot of our ordinances, we'd like to start being able to take a look at those and start fine-tuning those and getting them a little more up to date and getting it where we're, we're getting the type of roads that we want for the future. And sidewalks and all those kind of things, mailboxes on the side of the road. You know, are we going to allow brick mailboxes that become a potential hazard if somebody hits them? Are we going to limit our liability and say, no, no brick mailboxes? Whether we use, you know, right now, we use concrete pipe in our right-of-way. One of the things we want to talk about with y'all in the future is going to be taking concrete pipe where it has to be used everywhere, because it's a much longer, more sustainable pipe system, in my opinion. And it protects future homeowners and future property owners. Because if you have a pipe that it's only going to last 25, 30 years compared to one that's going to last 50-plus years, you know, it, it, go ahead and do the due diligence upfront and save everybody a little, little headache. So, and those, a lot of those calls are brought on, upon, you know, a developer at the time when they're developing. So, and the time, the time to work on those kind of things is when you're permitting with developers, not afterwards. It's very hard to get a developer to do something afterwards as compared to working with them upfront to get what the town needs. But we need it in our ordinances to do that.
At the intersection study there with Castle, Castlewood and Sonoya.
Yes, sir.
In my opinion, I think you have to include taking down that tree that's, that's there.
The tree right on the corner?
Well, yeah, it's almost on the corner, between the driveway and the corner. I mean, I think it's falling apart as, you know, pieces are falling. But it's, I think, to improve the look of it and to do whatever you're going But it's, I think, to improve the look of it and to do whatever you're going to do, I think you need to include getting rid of that tree.
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
Just as a thought.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Update me on where Laurel Forest is. Why, I know, I was thinking that's what it was, but why would it need sidewalk repairs? It's fairly neat.
There's two small little places in there where the sidewalk is settled around catch basins. It's very, that's why I say that we're going to go out and do the evaluation. That one I'd actually have looked at. And there's two places. It was brought to our attention by a property owner who lives by one of them. It's a trip hazard thing. It's, it's a very, very small thing. We're not likely redoing all the sidewalks in there.
Okay, and, or bear with me here a second. Under the Tyrone Road, under road resurfacing, I had asked about getting that section fixed several months ago. And was told that we were kind of waiting around for development.
Right. Yes, and that's, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So, yeah, that's something, I'm so glad you brought that up because yes, that's something I'm glad we're talking about right here. We had a developer that was interested in that piece of property, the Valleywood area. Since then, that has fallen through. There is talk, my, my understanding that we have another developer who is potentially looking at the area. The other thing is we have a, we have on the other side of the railroad track, the intersection with Palmetto Road and Tyrone and Sonoya. That, we need to look at that very heavily too. We started a, a study on that. We've got some of the preliminary data back. And there needs to be some discussions about that with the street scaping and the planning of what we're going to do there. So that was Tyrone Road, yes. That's one of those things. How long do we want to wait before we pull the trigger on that? If you, if council feels like you'd rather wait a year and see what happens, I'm totally fine with that. That's not, like I say, the road is not falling apart. We'll continue to maintain it. I want to catch it becomes, before it comes so bad that we're FDR-ing it instead of just building, paving it. But we got, we have some years to do that, if you want to, a couple of years if you want to do that.
It is in bad shape, and yeah, like Scott said, at, at the time that you asked about that and we brought that up. There was extensive discussions with the developer and it was going to be, if it had passed, it would have been a rather large development. Now, the, the new scope is, has kind of changed. It's a little bit smaller of a development, but it would still have an impact on that intersection. That said, there's been so much tire kicking with this development that I don't know how much, I don't know how many more years this could stretch out. So if you all want to tackle that, that's, you know, we can make it happen.
If we do, the development will probably come, right? Murphy's Law.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, if you want to give me any feedback on that, so I know how to proceed with my budget, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Fine with what?
Doing what he wants to do. Waiting around is, is not helping people's cars.
It really looks bad.
Pride's bad too.
But you know, there's that area just on the north side of the road that's always wet. You know where I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if there's a underground spring.
They are underground springs. Eric DeLuce and I investigated that one day.
Might need to know about that.
There's several underground springs, because I was worried about water standing and mosquitoes. And I happened to be, be there and he said, let's go look.
Did that work recently where they put all that riprap over there?
That was the utility company.
It looks like they've resolved quite a bit of that.
They did, and our guys have worked on it too. I mean, it's not just them. Our guys have been working on it too. Where they put the riprap in, it's a little high, I think, in that one wet spot you're talking about. So we may have to go out there and just take a little look at that. I saw it a couple of weeks ago when it rained.
That water just flows. It just flows down by the railroad track.
Yes, ma'am. It goes down, there's a pipe down there that crosses under the road and goes all the way back towards Tricam Creek. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at that. We got to repave it. That's also something that, you know, we would look, we could look at at that time as far as if we really need to do any substantial regrading in that area. Put that on my list here while we're talking about it. Okay, um, let's see. The project roadway intersection study, the previous orders, and sploß, okay, sploß we kind of already talked about. So next is our environmental stormwater section. There are five major projects we're going to be looking at. One of them is Shamrock Park Pond Improvements. That pond has a lot of large trees on it. Trees on dams are not a good thing. Had some that were cut on the front side of the dam, probably because they were dying, I assume. Those will slowly begin to rot. As they rot, they leave a hole. When they leave a hole, the water can go through it. And eventually that can add to potential of creating a, a small flow through it, which then takes soil with it, which then causes the dam to start failing. So we're going to look at that part of it, and when we do that, there is a overflow pipe there that does not work well. The outlet structure in the pond, as you guys know, we basically, that's not operational right now. Everything's going through the, the 24-inch pipe on the end of the, edge of the pond up near the Clark property. So we want to get that all straightened out. We're also looking at that pond to see what it can do for us in terms of stormwater detention from downtown. Because if we can, if we can get it, we can get enough storage in that to allow for a higher impervious area in downtown. What it does is it allows people to more utilize their downtown property for businesses and parking and those kinds of things. And you won't have to have as much grass area. Now, at the same token, we also require a thing called a GILID, which is a green infrastructure, low-impact development. So they still would have to capture a certain amount of that water and retain it in some system like an infiltration trench or something like that. That allows that first inch to inch and a half of water to come off and try to soak down into the ground. Because most of your pollutants, like dripping oil from cars and things like that, will wash in on those smaller rain events, which is about 80% of your rain events. Will come in and get actually brought into the soil and keep it from going all the way down into the street. That's how that works. So by looking at this pond and upgrading it, sizing the outlet and all those kinds of things, and looking at the storage capacity. It gets to where you start saying, okay, we can let this area of the drainage basin be a little higher density. Or we can let the whole drainage basin, if it's big enough. So that's kind of our goal out of that one. It's a long-term planning thing for us.
How about the property behind the oil fire station? Rain it better so it can be used?
Dredging is a possibility if we need to get more volume in the pond. Right now, we don't know exactly how much that pond can currently handle. So that's the first step, is figure out what the pond can handle. And then determine from there how fast the water, we want the water to leave it. To not go past the pre-development rate. We can see exactly how fast that is and equate that to how much impervious area that means every lot can have, kind of thing. And I'm trying to squeeze a very complicated model into as simple as I can make it here, but, you know, that's, impervious area affects how fast your water runs off the property. So when you do these pond things, you're talking about, like, remember I talked to you about the bathtub last time? You've got water coming in, it stores, right? As, because the drain is only going so fast. And then when it gets to where it's going faster than it can come in, like more than a hundred-year storm event. Then you have that little overflow in your tub that lets the water go out in an emergency, so it doesn't flood the bathroom, okay? That's what we're going to be looking at, is that tub, our pond, and what it looks like. There may be some dredging associated with it if we do certain things with, with the sploß money for the downtown area, or for the Shamrock Park project. When we build the pavilion and stuff like that, if we want to approach the edge of the water more, we could bring the water towards, towards the building more. You could have ability to walk out on like a little boardwalk behind it or something, you know, there's things like that that you can start incorporating. But if you want to do that, then we can gain a little more volume in the pond. I, I don't necessarily want to go towards right behind the firehouse because that area is a, is kind of ideal for some bird nesting and things like that. Because it's, it's got a little wooded area in it, although it is also showing a lot of sediment in the aerial photography. So at that point, we would look at, if we did anything, of trying to minimize our damage to the, to the vegetation around it and just try to look at removing the sediment. Let me answer your question.
Talk about, like a walking path on the, on the backside of those businesses through their post office and...
Yes, we are talking about that, of trying to get a built-to-use path. And one of the things we talked about with the police department, if, when we moved the pole barn from the O P D. Is that that would allow more parking and that path would go basically from the Library and Commerce and across the back of those properties, straight to the park. Okay, Pendleton Dam, you guys know what's going on with Pendleton Dam. The category one upgrade is one of the projects, the culvert replacement repair. That's a continuation of what we're doing this year. We're going through, we've had our, you know, we've been evaluating, every year we do 20% of our structures. We've got to do 100% every five years, so we, we target for 20, 20% each year. And we get those evaluations done, we start looking at them, we say, okay, here's the ones we're going to look at that are, are the worst. And here's ones that we have complaints on, and here's ones that are going under our roads we're going to build. You know, that we know we're going to repave in the next couple of years. And we start looking at all that and try to figure out which projects we do first, second, and third. So that'll be coming up to you guys for money for that, once we kind of sit down with all that data that we got from last year and start, start cranking it out. Adams Lake Dam is in Maple Shade. That's another one that has trees on the back of it that we need to address eventually. And, well, not eventually, but we need to get working on it, I should say. So that's one that we'll be dealing with an HOA on it also. So there'll be some discussions, I'm sure, with, with y'all on that, with legal and town manager.
We own that lake.
We do not own the lake, but we own the road over the dam.
Very similar to the Pendleton situation.
Will, will there be anybody in Maple Shade that'll have any financial responsibilities with that?
That's, that's the kind of conversations that I think the town manager and legal and y'all will need to have.
Your answer is probably.
Close enough.
Or maybe, I should say, but, but I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't bank on it right now.
Is all of that dam in Tyrone? None of it's in Peachtree City?
That's correct. And then the last major project is a maintenance of our town-owned ponds, like we routinely do. Some of this we do in-house and some of it we, we have to take out of house. Because they've either overgrown too much or they're too difficult for us to access. They need larger equipment or something like that. All right.
Talking about dams, what about the one down Valleywood? The old Far Lake property?
Yes, ma'am. That's ours, yes, ma'am. The one going across the road? Or the road going across the, between the two lakes? Yes, ma'am. That's one that we're hoping when the developer comes in, they're going to, you know, fix or do whatever we need to done.
No, no, not that far down. Back up.
Oh, on the paved section?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. That is not ours, my understanding. I think we've discussed that one in my recollection.
I think it's just a runoff that was under the roads.
Had to armor that ditch and we did the paving of Valleygood Road right there. That's Mr. Whelan's property, I believe.
Whelan. All right, so next is the quarterly dam inspections. We do that on our CAT1 dams. And submit that information to EPD and owners. And our goal, you know, if we can get this additional personnel, is to also start doing those on our, on our, on the category two dam, like Maple Shade. And I think, there's another one, is it Handley? I think is the other, the other one. The new EPD requirements for stormwater management program in 2023 are out. These, basically, like Brandon was saying, Phillip were saying, there's more and more regulations coming out on stormwater. It's like every time you turn around, somebody's pushing something else. So this is, you know, increasing at a very rapid rate. And we're getting to a point where once we reach 10,000 people, I think I've told you all before, this is the magic number. When you go on a, kind of having some exemption from a few things to having now to report on more things. So that'll, that'll be a, another step. So as part of that, Devin is involved in getting that all up to speed. She's got a revised stormwater management program that she has to put together by June 5th of this year. And she's also, since I've started on that line, item, the enforcement response plans, illicit discharge plans. And developing that, that green infrastructure practi, practability policy. That is basically an ordinance that tells people what we accept in whether we say you have to or don't have to do the green infrastructure. There are certain exemptions. For example, if your soil doesn't allow for the conditions to, to work, obviously we can't make people, you know, replace all the soil on their property. But it's setting limits as when, when those things kick in, because we get permit requests that automatically say no. You know, of course they're going to say no, no, they don't want to spend money. You know, it doesn't work. And then we go back and we have to start talking with them and stuff like that. So part of what EPD has noticed that and with everybody, and said, no, we're not just checking this off the list, everybody. You've got to do due diligence and show that it, it, it doesn't meet the requirements. Right, good faith effort. Thank you, Phillip. That's exactly right. So getting back up to the other stuff, I told you about the five-year program that we do, the 20% per year. Permit plan reviews, inspections and stop orders. We're going to continue to do that. And this year, we started a high school internship program, which has been very successful. We had two people helping on the stormwater side. And they have been, and one person I think was helping with public relations kind of stuff with, I think with you and with the ladies at the rec center and the library. And they've been, they've put out a lot of good documents. In fact, we had one of them come and pitch to the town manager about stormwater, or about sewer. And the inflow and stuff that we were seeing in infiltration. And she knocked it out of the ballpark.
I was blown away. I mean, this is a high school student and it, it was one of the, and I, I'm pretty decent with Excel.
Do her stuff. We're going to miss her when she goes to Georgia Tech next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Ask her for help.
You should have, yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Let me hire her. Oh, goodness. All right, so our goals for facilities. We talked about the new public workshop. We want to get that completed next FY. We have, we, we kind of put on the brakes when we started talking about whether the property was, was owned part of the Shamrock parcel or not. And we put on the brakes also when we started talking about the back property here. But it's back up and rolling again, and that's part of that ARPA money that Brandon had talked about. That'll be redirected to the general fund, or the general fund, will free up money in the general funds. At Redwine, he asked y'all for a little guidance on this one. We have a HVAC unit there that hasn't worked, that the AC part of it hasn't worked for well over a year. And I needed to get with the new rec director and discuss this a little bit more detail. But we were able, we had the ability to keep heat on during this winter, thank God, because of the coldness, the cold weather we had. But the question becomes, do we want to replace that unit? It's going to run probably somewhere around $6,500, $7,000. I don't know what our future plans are on that, but when we get that resolved, we may be showing you, maybe requesting that as part of the facility budget unless they want to do something like a just turn it into storage, but we're still going to need some at least heat for the bathrooms and keep the water from freezing up.
And thought about a ductless air instead of $6,500 more like a thousand?
That's possible to use a little mini split or something like that in there. That would work well if we do away with the center section and take the water out of the center section and make it a storage area versus it being a, right now it's a concessions area. It's not used. Right.
But with our pending pickleball tournaments and stuff that could come, I would really.
It might. Right. And that's why I say we need to have some discussions in-house on this a little bit more. But when we figure that out, it'll be something in the budget this year. Either addressing what we're going to do down there and how we're going to do it, or at least what we're going to do with the HVAC system. Because if the furnace goes out, then we've got a whole nother ballgame. You know, then we're stuck with no heat down there. Cut the water off the building and drain it best as possible.
And while we're on this topic, I've recently had, I believe it's Mr. Maldonado from TYBA. He has reached out, he's taught, he's talked to me about this in the past, but he, he reached out to me last week with a renewed focus on wanting to utilize the one existing softball field to start another softball league. He said he thinks he's got enough interest to do a youth softball league. But I just asked him, I said, let's, let's get past this pickleball construction and all the mess that's over there right now before we talk about that. I said, let's revisit this in the fall. But it could be that we, we could see a little bit of activity with softball at that park as well going forward. He's been eager to get something like that going for a while, but we knew the pickleball thing was coming and we wanted to see where we landed with that. And so, yeah, there's potential new life, a lot of new life coming to that park. So we just have to see where we land on it.
With that, I've, I've noticed even with the practicing, they, they park on the street right next to those North Parkinson's.
And that, that's something else that he mentioned is that there is a particular team that's going out there to practice. They do not have our permission. They were run out of a neighboring jurisdiction for using their fields without permission. And I've got to patch them out there and, and let them know. Let me know if you would. And we'll, we'll try to get that addressed. But yeah, we don't, we don't need them using our, our, you know, parking like that. You know, we, we, they don't need to be having organized practices without our permission of that nature. So I do need to have a conversation with them.
Just, just a, just a side note, exactly what Ms. Howard is referring to. One of the issues that we always had when they, when they were active fields, that they were parking on that dirt road that borders the back of those homes that, that rest, that, you know, border the park area. And that's really not a place for them to be or drive. We really need to think about either signage or some way.
There's a whole parking lot there.
Exactly.
There is signage there.
I mean, yeah, so we'll.
The signs are there.
Yeah. They just, I mean, that's, yeah, signs are.
No.
There's no, no, no traffic beyond this point.
All right. Sorry to hijack your discussion there.
No, it's all good stuff. Okay. So 881 Sonoya, just give you a lot of data on the museum foundation repair. We found out that the, the crack, once the flooring was pulled up because of the water burst. We found that the facility is not moving like we thought it was moving. And the day actually after that was done is when we met with our contractor structural engineer and looked at it and we saw that the cracks inside the building were not consistent with, with the corner separating off. What we saw was long, thin, little crack going from one side of, of the room to the other side, down the long side of the room. And it was obvious that the settlement was just a natural settlement of a building. Every building settles a little bit. Why it put so much pressure on that one corner enough to pull it apart? Nobody can really say why other than from the laser level that we used, it looked like it settled a little under half an inch, which is typical for a long-term building. So what that leaves us with is we don't have to do anything like helical piles. So we don't have to spend all the money on the helical piles. What we are going to do is we have the option of a couple of things to seal the building. And I believe I've mentioned this to you before, basically either sealing it with a like caulk type sealant the cracks or going in and removing the mortar and repointing the bricks. Either way, it's going to look different. You're not going to match the mortar. You're not going to, there's some of the bricks are actually cracked. So you're not going to match a brick if you try to put a new brick in. And if you put the sealant in between the brick and the two pieces of brick, why not just go ahead and do the ceiling on the whole thing? So right now, my feeling is that we should just go ahead and do the caulk type ceiling. It's at the rear of the building. Nothing's going to look perfect. Nothing's going to look great. The only way that's going to happen is you rebrick, rebrick two sides of the building and that's, that's not going to go look good. So we're going to go with a small choice, cheaper repair, but long-term repair. All right. For the library, I know we're talking about replacing flooring and painting the interior. Was one of the projects that we're talking about with them. And I need to get with them on any other projects they have besides the stuff that's already in the splopped. And then evaluating their parking lot. Their parking lot could, is at a point where it's, I think it's still something that we could do a high-grade sealant upon. Going to crack seal and then you put AJ5 on it. And that would bring that basically look like a brand new parking lot. And it would be restripped. So that's one of the things that I want to look at for the budget for this year and, you know, try to get that done. And then the biggest thing probably on the facilities or not probably is on the facilities is the general cleaning and maintenance of our facilities. We've discussed in the past, the idea of getting a janitorial service, do that work to free up our crew more. And we're right now still investigating the pricing on that, trying to get a quote from a, a company on that so that we can compare what that would look like compared to our hours being spent. Equipment. You saw with the talk about the ARPA, the duck truck, the portable lights and the salt spreader. And then some smaller things. There's more to the list that we want to take with general fund. This is a big list, so we're going to try to look at what's reasonable. I know we're trying to, once again, spend some of the surplus, but we're hoping some of that might, might fit this. And is there equipment also in Sploß? Yes. So some of this will fall under the equipment Sploß too. So we had a bucket truck that's getting up in years. Pickup truck. The ranger we have is very, very old. We talked about maybe even a utility bed truck. That's, you know, the kind that have the toolboxes along the sides of it, stuff like that. A compact track loader is, we've talked about before, we've been calling it basically a skid steer because that's what everybody calls it, but it's actually a compact track loader. It's the one that has the tracks on it. With that compact track loader, we can get a broom sweep for it. We can get a mulching head that can fit with that. A grapple hook that we can come up and grab larger pieces of wood with. It's like a clamshell, but you can also pick up brush and things like that with it. So it can help speed up the process. And a trencher is another implement that we can put on it. For the tractor, we're actually looking at a potential side mower attachment goes on the, the John Deere, which would allow us to use it kind of like the, the Mini X, but tractor is considerably more mobile. So you can get the tractor out there quicker and do a job and roll in. And you don't have the Mini X moving slowly and, you know, with its reach and everything. This will actually, I think, have a longer reach than the Mini X, which will free up the Mini X to do the digging jobs that we need it to do. And then root pruner, I don't know if I've ever talked to y'all about a root pruner, but basically it's like a, if none of y'all haven't seen it, it's a, it's a big like saw blade basically. And it goes on like a stump grinder kind of looking thing and it just goes down and it just cuts the roots. It's better than trenching because it doesn't pull the root. Trencher pulls the roots, damages the tree roots. This just slices them. And you use it to run it down the side of your roads, like behind your curb or on the outside, just off the asphalt on your cart paths and things like that, your trails in, in the woods. And you can use it to keep those roots from coming up and buckling the road or the cart path or the trail. We've used, I used them in state parks a good bit and we had giant live oaks that were, that we were maintaining the root systems by going only so deep, but it kept the roads from breaking up around them. So the trees still remain strong. They've lasted through hurricanes and everything else because you're not damaging the bigger roots. You're just, just cutting the upper, you know, six to 12 inches. So that's everything on Public Works.
Why would, I mean, why would you get a track compact loader rather than a rubber tire compact loader?
We have a skid steer, the rubber tire skid steer that we can use for that. But when you get that off-road and you start working around things like brush that's been cut and you've got pieces of, of tree stumps, you know, like little tree stumps sticking up. They can puncture the tires more easily and things like that. And the track can get you back through a little bit wetter area because it spreads the load out on the track versus just the wheels. So you, it's less pounds per square foot on the equipment. So it can get you into wetter areas like ponds and things like that.
Being in the septic tank business, I understand both of those. I also know that a track, to repair a track is three times, four times as much as rubber tire.
It is more expensive.
Expensive. And that was way back when. So no telling what it is now.
Probably the same because tires have gone up and.
But I agree, they are more efficient, the track.
Yeah. The one place I'd, I'd be careful is like actually trying to turn them on roads and things like that, especially if it's an old road.
They tear up pavement.
They can, they can, yeah. Any other comments on Public Works? Okay, let's jump into sewer real quick. Try and get through that one more quicker. Less, less than it. We do the system maintenance with the Kaweeta Wassa, continue that. You know, we were talking earlier about things that the purpose of the, the additional person would be. Here's good examples. Pump station two generator, we've not had any time to even approach that this year. It was in this year's budget. I'm trying to still get that going this year, but it won't be in place this year because it has a very long lead time. So that will show up in next year's budget. Pump station three conversion to natural gas, same thing. It's not as big as the generator project, but it's also not mission critical this year. So last year I told you, we were trying to be extremely aggressive, right? And that I wouldn't necessarily hit everything. And here's, here's some of the things that, that are crossing over. The fog program, the fat oil and grease. Want to improve our education and our tracking ability on grease traps and things like that and, and inspections for grease traps. Pipe and manhole repair project, the I and I reports. We're going to, the project that was under design right now, we're going to finish that design and move it into construction. That construction is going to fall into next FY. So there'll be some carryover of that. And then we'll also have next FY, what we can't do this year. We're going to fit it, we're going to move into next year's project. So there'll be like, say a little carryover there. Capacity is a big issue and I won't even go into that because it's just, that's just a whole nother workshop. And then as Nikki was telling you earlier about the potential for growth and some of it is bordering our town and potentially could be part of our town. With that in mind, we have to continue to do our planning of moving and looking at our infrastructure and how we can support those kinds of things that they become available to us. So part of our sewer goal is to continue to look at that connection planning. And also look at connections where they seem logical or other places that may have future development. Valleywood would be one, but they, we've already kind of, we've done that when we built the, the main sewer project for downtown. All right. So any questions on sewer?
Scott, what have we done with the relining of the pump stations?
Pumps, pump station number two was relined. We're not seeing anything going on right now damage wise as far as in pump station one and three. But we haven't moved on doing any of the lining of those at this point in time. They're holding up fine. If we start to see deterioration, then we'll bring that to you. Unless y'all tell me just to move forward and do it, then I'll do it. But right now it's not showing the need for it. All right. Public Works in Sploß, Brandon, I guess we can just skip that because we pretty much covered everything. Our conversations, ARP and Sploß and everything. And then last, but not least, the tree fund. It was going to take a long time. So we're going to continue to collect funds for tree removal for the town's ordinance. And we're, we're talking about doing the streetscaping, which will involve trees. We're talking about projects along the park that will probably include some trees. And in the process of this, we'll be utilizing the tree fund to plant these trees. Keep in mind, the tree fund has to be used for a certain sized tree. So we can't use it for shrubs. It has to reach a certain height and be a certain size. Any questions about the tree fund?
Remind me of where the, the funding for the tree fund comes from.
It comes from when people re, people develop their property and they take that property and they cut trees that they're not capable of replanting. And anytime somebody cuts a specimen tree, that's a main one that goes on there, but there's also a calculation for non-specimen trees. That's a little more complicated based on tree density in acreage.
And goodwill have to, have to contribute to that when they.
Yes, sir. I believe that was one that contributed. And we actually use some of that tree fund money for the trees on.
If any trees go down Sonoy Road in front of Shamrock Park, please be aware that there's electrical wiring going across the top end of the sky. And don't plant any trees under them because we just had trees taken out that were, you know how they come through and cut the tops out? Something else I want to go back and ask you about the resurfacing, I think it was under resurfacing of streets or paving, resurfacing Laurelwood, the road I live on. I'm sure you're aware of that brick raised part there at that four-way stop.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we get rid of that?
Ma'am, if you tell me to get rid of it, I'll get rid of it.
Yeah, I want it gone.
You as a collective.
That's why I look down through here.
Is that a stop, is that the stop sign if I remember correctly?
Yeah, it's at the stop sign.
So it's not like it's acting like a, like a traffic calming device because it's at a stop sign. So the only purpose is it just gives it a look.
No, they were, they put that thing in there because when that subdivision was built, Foxford Run, they wanted a raised crosswalk. And for the children to walk over to get to the bus stop. And it came out to be that thing. And horrible.
But the one you're talking about is actually on Laurelwood, right? It's not the one going into Foxford.
No, it's Laurelwood.
That's not raised, I don't think.
It's those brick, the pavers that come up above the street about.
Yes, ma'am.
You want to make that motion?
Yeah. Can I make that motion that we have those removed and it's a smooth surface?
There a second? We got a motion and a second? Discussion, all in. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, Scott, now you get that out.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what I'm talking about, Dr. Lewis.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah, I've gone over it and wondered why it was there. And your comment about, I'm sorry, your comment about the trees are spot on and we're actually doing talks about what we do with the power downtown. That's some of our discussions that Phillip and I have been having and we've been having with Brandon and that will be bringing to y'all as soon as we get some numbers on that too, as to what we're going to do with, with that. But you're absolutely right, planting the trees right underneath the lines doesn't, doesn't bode well.
And not those kind of trees either.
Right. Right.
You're not planting any bread.
No, we're not, yes, sir, no, sir.
So do the trees have to be so far away from the right of way?
From the edge of the road, we try to keep a distance off the edge of the road. It depends on the speed limit, depends on the speed limit.
It depends on the speed limit and the tree type.
Yeah.
Whether we have curb and gutter or whether we don't. There's not a, there's not a universal distance.
All right.
It'll definitely be out of line of sight, we'll put it that way.
Okay.
Yes, we're not putting a tree and that's going to block line of sight.
Do you want us to just go straight to Patty or do you want us to?
My understanding is lunch is on the way, but it's not here yet, so we might as well.
All right. Ms. Patty? Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Excellent report. Hello, Patty.
Y'all.
Thank you.
So everything that I've heard so far, and I've been live streaming it before I came up here, and I decided that leisure services, we're in the people business. What you've been hearing is all the infrastructure and everything else to keep the town going, but we're sort of in the people business. So we're, we're here to serve our citizens and as best we can. So with that, you want to go to the first slide? Thank you. Okay, so this is the way we ended things in 2022. I was really happy with our circulations. We are getting new families into the building and participating in our programs every week and that's always a good thing and we're getting to know them as well. And we have suggestion boxes, so we are, I think that we're really in tune with trying to give our patrons options on what to put in the library, what they want to read, programs that they would like. And that's one of our goals for this year and next year is to add more programs. Are there any questions about any of the stats that I've?
What kind of programs, are you going to get into that? What kind of programs you're thinking you might want to add or just more of the ones that you already have?
I always felt like we've sort of been pigeonholed into being for, for kids, meaning like preschoolers and elementary school age. And I feel like sometimes we've sort of lost those students that are in middle and high school. So Kate Chambers had started doing every, every month, we have like a teen, it's been a teen taste test for sodas, a teen taste test for snacks. We've been, that's what we call a soft activity. It's just, we don't ask for registration, but whoever wants to come between the hours of that program, we have the supplies there and it grows, it seems like, every month. And so we'll continue on doing that. We usually will do like, we started back doing the zombie apocalypse between the students and the PD department, that's always been a very popular program for us. So we're looking to sort of bridge that gap a little bit. And we're also looking into offering more programming for adults in the area as well. And I'll get into that just a few more slides.
Are those program attendees, are those unique attendees or, or repeat or repeat attendees or what is the, the split there?
Well, I would say for the most part, the attendees, like for example, our chess club, that's all ages and all levels of ability. So we've got adults that come in for that, we've got five-year-olds all the way, all the way up to adults. So that's widespread. In libraries, we have a breakdown, youth is 11 to 17 and then 18 on up is considered adults. So that's sort of how we use our breakdown for programming. Though I say that we have, word of mouth has helped us out a lot, that, you know, somebody comes, they enjoy the programs, they tell their friends, so then the friends come the next time. So I would say there's repeat people that come and participate and there's also, they will usually bring a friend and so we have somebody new coming. Did that answer your question a little bit?
Look, some, yeah, I mean, it went in that direction. I just wonder if we, we knew, how many of our attendees are, like, how many different human beings do we have as opposed to saying we've, we've had this, this number of attendees? How many, how many people can we say they are attending something? That would be a unique attendee, meaning.
Well, okay, so we had, is that's?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven hundred, that's all ages, all the way across the board.
Right.
I can give you more of a specific breakdown, I just didn't include that information.
I, I would just, you know, ballpark, but I think it's probably.
I would say probably families and children, five to 10 would be the bulk of that.
Thank you.
Hit it, Brandon.
Hit it.
So this is a sort of a repeat from the slides that I've done previously, but I added to, we've recently developed a partnership with the Alliance Theater, which includes, I believe it's four free tickets to shows. And we also added the Georgia Memory Net. And I'll get into a little bit more detail about that program, but basically it's dedicated to educating and sharing resources through the statewide program for people undiagnosed with dementia, Alzheimer's, caregivers and family members and loved ones. And I'll talk about that more in detail. But we, I just wanted to let you know that we are constantly adding programs, which is wonderful. So we, I feel like we've got like such a wide variety now that it, you know, families can get the zoo pass and go to the zoo, they can go to museums. So it's, I think it brings a little culture to our patrons.
No, I've utilized them as well, you know, with the, we did the puppet museum and we did the mummy museum and we've done the Georgia State Parks and you've had a few others that we've utilized and very, very nice.
Thank you.
I have a question, this just came up recent, last night actually, in reviewing the, what Darlene submitted for the, for the museum budget, there was a request in there for ancestry.com and I know that you guys have access to that, is that through a grant or how do, how does that, so if I want to come in there and research my ancestry, you have, is it where I can log into like a certain account and I have free access, full access to ancestry?
We have it through Galileo. So if you came into the library and you wanted to go to Galileo, that would be one of your databases. We also have Find a Grave USA, there's Heritage West, I think, there's several that would, that you can get into through Galileo and that's through a grant.
Reason I was asking is because there was a, there was a cost for the museum to access that, but I knew you guys had that access. So I thought a partnership would help out where, you know, both entities could make use of that. It would, it could help feed people to the museum and also feed people from the museum down to the library. Or if there was a way that, because you all fall under leisure services, could there be an access point at the museum for this service?
I can find that out.
That, that could be helpful because, you know, it would help to reduce the, the budget requirement there, but also give the access that they're looking for.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to share whatever resources we have and I, and I can check on that for ancestry.
What is the availability on the Fox, Fox in a Box other than the, I think it's 11:30 to 1:30 Friday, is that what it is? Is that the time slot?
I think it's the one on.
I think I saw that on, it's something you, you all had advertised. And I, I'll be out of town during that timeframe, so what it, what's available on that?
You could come down there right now and you could pretty much get the gist of the way it's set up. It would tell you, it's double-sided and there's a picture of it on my slides, but you could go down there now and you could just walk through and read everything.
Okay.
About what they've chosen to put as far as the history. The formal programming is going to run a little bit differently and we've got one Friday and then the 28th, I think, is the other date.
Okay, I can come down there on the 28th.
Okay. Anything else about the resources? Okay. Now on this slide, the Libtech Grant Money for 2020, I was having a senior moment when I put that together, so it should be Lib Grant Tech Money 2023. But the Libtech is sponsored through the state of Georgia. It budgets everything that we order, the public has to touch or be able to use. And in the past, we've gotten tablets, all of our public computers were, came from the Libtech Grant, we've gotten a smart board, so this year we're getting a Bluetooth speaker, a microphone and a lavalier microphone. So that would enable us to be portable wherever we decide to have a program. I think it was ordered, it's going to be ordered, I believe, in April, so we're very excited to get, get that and play around with it. Okay, so here's the Fox in a Box exhibit. That is a partnership that they started probably right during COVID because it's the way it's set up, nobody, you can just walk in and read and look at the pictures that they have, but it's better if you have somebody that's sort of like a moderator and, and emceeing, if you will. One of the things that we're doing is we've gotten several people in the community that have history with the Fox and they will come in and talk about their experiences going to the Fox, how it's influenced the Atlanta area, with me being a native Atlantean, I mean, if you don't go for anything else, just go for the architecture, it's magnificent. It's a way to showcase and bring a little culture to Tyrone.
The history behind the theater is fascinating, you know, who, what the building was before, just the date that they opened up was, I, I thought exactly was, was amazing, you know, at the time when, when things weren't too good in this country. But it's an interesting history.
The other is the Georgia Memory Net, that's our new partnership. It was a statewide program, it's developed in conjunction with Emma University. What I would like to do is, we do have resources and handouts that we have available for anybody that, that needs that type of information. Unfortunately, if you've not been touched by it personally, it's a cruel disease and there's a lot of, there's a lot of misinformation out there, but this is a way that maybe it could help families and those that are diagnosed or really don't know what the full spectrum is, but it's a way of sharing resources that we have, there's information on people that you can call and talk to. I'm hoping in the future that I can get one of the representatives in our area to come and have like a, a presentation for us about that and have a question and answer session later. So I'm excited about that as well. But those, I've got handouts if anybody needs that information or would just like to learn more about the disease. Okay, so this is a little bit continuing what I talked about last year as far as the area between the library and the recreation center. The first two pictures, those are different angles of that area and then that third picture is just a suggestion of the covered path that I wanted between the two buildings to sort of connect us. Since then, we had an Eagle Scout project, so I have four beautiful stained Adirondack chairs that sit right on the retaining wall that overlook the lake, so people can just go out there, read if they'd like, they can just enjoy the scenery and watch everybody else sweat while they're running or jogging. But it's, I look at it sort of like a, a small venue is sort of what I'm describing it. I'd like to get some grading and some more, I think the covered path would be nice. We already have some outside lights, I don't know if you've seen them at night when you've driven by, but they're beautiful. The Public Works guys did an amazing job, they look wonderful. So we've got the lights, which is one of the things that I wanted to add in that area. So I think we just need a little bit of landscaping there, maybe doing something with the retaining wall and I really think that we'll have a nice area for people to enjoy. I was thinking in terms of when people rent the recreation center. If it's a nice day, people would want to go outside, but other than the little playground, there's really not a whole lot to do, so I wanted to get maybe the oversized outdoor games that people would have access to as well. We also have a picnic bench there and a lot of our families from Storytime, after they finish there, they'll go outside and they'll have a lunch, then the kids will go play on the little frame playground, as we call it. So it's just another area that can be used for so many different things. I would like to maybe have programs outside, maybe have an open mic night with public reading or poetry night, something to that effect. So that's sort of what I'm, what I, the vision I have in mind.
You and I discussed, on that third picture, you and I had discussed one time, at least as this picture presents it, taking that farther out on either side and having soft seating, you know, not necessarily around a fire pit, but that type of seating. Is that still what you're thinking or are you only thinking covered path?
Because that, part of that area is where our septic tank is, it's pretty mushy there and I don't know what the, I'd have to ask Scott about what they can do there as far as landscaping or what we can put there, but I'm not opposed to having it wider, but the main thing I wanted to do was just have the pathway covered so that, because we have a lot of programs that we use in the summer where they're gathering in the library and then they're walking over to the rec center and it would just be nice to have it covered to keep them, you know, safe from the elements, but I'm not opposed to having it wider. I really wish I had some way of getting like some sort of a sketch to, or finished product, what the area could look like, but I don't have that.
Patty, when you say it's a mushy area, where's it coming from?
A low-lying area right there. The sidewalk actually sits higher than the landscaping, so the water runs off and just kind of lays in there where the septic tanks used to be.
Used to be?
Well, they're there, but you're on public sewer at this point.
We might need to fix that.
It's, it's not the septic tank.
I know, but, but it's a mosquito thing.
And, and this is, what she's talking about, this is all part of 2023 Splos passes, it'd be part of that, so there would be an overall grading improvement as part of this.
That'd be good, yeah.
When you, when you're walking out from. When you, when you're walking out from the programming room of the library to the right, that's the area that I just have some concerns about just because it does seem to stay damp and moist. And I mean, it takes a long time for, for that to dry out, especially since we had that, all that rain. It was awful. So that's the only area that I've kind of have some questions about that I need your expertise on. But I think it could really serve the community very well. And I mean, recreation, can use it. They could have classes out there if they wanted to. But I just sort of think that, that it's a perfect spot for a small gathering. So I, I'm excited about it. I think it'll look real great.
Freak y'all.
You have been today, I've heard this kind of thing recently. I've never heard you mention mosquitoes until today.
I can't stand standing in water. L'Oreal would get rid of it.
The building is 15 years old and I think that it's got good bones. Everything is held up pretty well. But I think that there's some areas that we need to upgrade just because it would best utilize what we're trying to do as far as programming and places for people to come in with their families and just sort of chill for a little bit. In the children's area, I've found like a window bench that would fit right in where that area is, where the windows are. It's got cubbies underneath, so we could put books underneath there. And it's like a window seat. And we would just sort of spruce that up. We've had a lot of families come in that they've played with the Legos we have. They've built things, they've done the puzzles. So it's sort of like a soft activity for us. The other picture, that was originally designated as a reference area, but we never really used that. I would like to turn that into a teen area where we have like maybe a sofa, some club chairs, places for them to charge their devices. And we could put some shelving, use some of that shelving to put some of the reading materials there for them. Just a place for them to sort of chill and hang out if they want to do homework or whatever, or if they're waiting to do a program that we have in the program room. They could just sort of hang out there. And also, Scott mentioned it, but I think it needs to be painted on the inside. About five, six years ago, maybe, we had the outside painted. But we need to have the inside repainted if possible. We're pretty careful, but sometimes our carts scrape up against the wall. And we've got little nicks and spots there that we can't get out with a magical eraser. So it needs to be a little repainted, I think. And sort of modernized. The flooring, I'd like to have new flooring, especially in the, the work areas. It's the old fashioned tiles that we used to have in school that you had to strip and wax. And nobody wants to do that anymore. And I just want something a little bit more durable. Some of the chairs that we have, they're light powder coated. So scraping back and forth has left marks on that tile and it's just, it looks bad. So that's one of the things that, that I've been looking into as well. Other than that, our goals are pretty simple. You know, we want to stay open. We want to have more programs for folks. We want to grow and build the collection that we already have. We're adding new titles so that people, if they never come in the library, I just see them maybe every two years when they come in to renew their library card, they download everything. So we're using some of our state money to purchase new titles for people to download in the virtual library. So it, I've got a good staff. They've done wonders. It takes all of us to make it all go and worthwhile. But I just want to keep improving on what we already have. Do you have any questions for me? Do I have any other slides? I think that's it, isn't it? Do you have anything for me as far as like the ARPA money? I know Brandon pretty much went over that with y'all this morning. But is there anything on that list that you have any questions about?
I would just like to tell you that I was just blown away with all the activities that you have coming up and how ingenious it is that y'all have, have just tapped into so many different things to offer to the citizens. I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Was there a couple of weeks ago, I saw that, there was a cart there, it looked like an old, what, what, what is, is anything?
Our hot dog cart?
Yeah, whatever that was. I thought that was a pretty neat piece.
So we want to fix it up a little bit and we want to use it at town functions. What we plan to do is hand out flyers, bookmarks, any materials that we might have, even for the friends group at town functions. Because it's so portable, we could just pick it and push it up around. So we don't have to have a table. We can just mix and mingle with the crowd. So it needs a little bit of work, but it's, it's going to be cool, I think, when we get it fixed up.
Why don't you tell council about your discussions with Brandon and your plans for the future regarding, you know, signage, wayfinding, advertising on the, the marquee and all of that so that our citizens know more about where you are and what you offer.
So when we get new families, sometimes they're still being directed to 881 Sonoy Road if they're using Google. And all we really have on the corner of Commerce is like a real estate size sign. So if a good gust of wind comes by, it blows it over. So we still get people asking us, where are you located? And I just feel like it's, it would be in our best interest if we have more visible signage of where we're located. So originally, I had wanted to put like a big sign, like a, what do they call it, a monument? A monument type sign so that people would know, like, even if it's a big arrow pointing down here, so that people would be able to find us a lot easier. And I feel like we do a really good job on our social media. We have Facebook, Instagram. We have slides showing all the programs, our hours of operation, everything that you could possibly think of. But for those people like me that aren't on social media, I'm thinking they still need to know where we are. And, and talking with Brandon, I feel like with your plans for the streetscaping and, and that you'll have the signage there for people to find us. But that's, we're trying to reach as many people as possible and make it easy to find us. And that's why I wanted the street signage there, so that they would know that we're here.
One, one idea was to do a marquee type sign like we have in front of Town Hall at the corner of Commerce and Sonoy Road. The problem with that is, we don't know what's going to come on that corner, what's going to be developed there. And we could put something in that right of way, of course. But the way these signs are designed, like ours is wired to the building. So it's easy, you know, that was a short run. They did it while they were constructing the building. You can log in from anywhere to the system and update the sign. I am sure there are upgraded versions that allow you to remotely access, but you're going to pay a monthly fee usually for that type of service. So due to the cost and the location, not knowing what's coming in there, all of that, what we kind of talked about, at least for a temporary measure, as far, and when I, when I say temporary, until we figure out if there's a possibility of doing this elsewhere. One of the library staff members has now been trained to use this sign, that they can at least advertise library programs. It's not going to help direct people directly to the library because it'll just say, you know, program at the library. But then like the, the overall wayfinding sign plan will include something at that corner better than the blue and white sign that's there now that she talked about to direct people down that way. So we're going to do everything we can to, in the overall design of the wayfinding signage, to help people, because they are tucked away by there. You know, in hindsight, if, if I, if I could, I would, I would pick that building up and sit it right where PD is, you know, the old PD building is right now. Because it, it should be front and center. But that's, that's what the town had to work with back 15 years ago. And it's a beautiful building. They do a great job. And yeah, we do, we do need to work on getting people back there.
Have you seen the books display at Trilith in front of the new hotel? It's like a tall, almost like a fence and it's very thin. It's big books with names. All, maybe like that. Wouldn't take up a lot of space, but it's nice.
We're going to be working with, when we do the overall design for the wayfinding sign, and if it gets approved in the budget, we'll be working with a designer to put together a packet that shows what each type of sign will look like and the placements and things of that. We hope to come up with something cool but affordable. That might just kind of the town look.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
All right, so food is here. So we will, is it okay if we take a, a brief break, 15, 20 minutes to get the food, come back? And as we're wrapping up lunch, we can begin the next session. Is that good? Counsel, do y'all have any opposition? All right, it's 12:17. So let's try to be back in our seats with our food by 12:30. And yeah, let's do that. yeah, let's do that.
You look pretty in your red.
Well, thank you very much. I'm glad everybody's enjoying their lunch.
Thanks for filling in today.
You're welcome. I was just going to give everyone an update before I get started. Linda did have hernia surgery last Tuesday and she's doing very well. Going through physical therapy and she's been wonderful about, um, keeping in touch with me, answering any questions. She's just been a dear despite, you know, her trying to overcome her surgery. So.
I'm sure you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Um, well, to start off, we're going to talk about our 2022 successes. I just want to start, um, I do have a typo where it is actually two to six, not two to seven. I wanted to point that out first and foremost. Um, the 2022 successes, uh, were the Tyrone Tree Farm. Had 22 trees, uh, that participated in, um, during our Christmas, uh, event. Um, we also had the expansion of the tree lighting celebration, again, two to six. Uh, we had the addition of a Christmas market where vendors could come and participate, which is wonderful since it being Christmas time. Um, we also have the inclusion of the DDA in the Christmas event and they were wonderful in helping with the cookie decorating and we had a lot of cookies. So we're hoping to include that again in this year's Christmas festivities. Uh, we also had the addition of an art class. Um, and it's where just these wonderful women come in. It's open to anyone. They come in, they bring their canvas and they just enjoy painting together. And it, they're just, they're lovely people and there's no cost to it. It's just for the sake of enjoying doing art together. Um, for our Halloween trick or treating, we have included the princesses at Halloween. Uh, and there's really no marketing to be done with them. They passed out cards and they are popular. So we are really proud to have them during our trick, during our trick or treating event. And we will have them again this year. Um, we are lucky to have the DDA and do the coordination of First Fridays. And we are looking forward to the start of that, our very first one, May 5th, which is, by the way, is also Cinco de Mayo. So, um, April 21st, uh, we will be having our spring market, which we introduced last year. And I'm on the other side of that coin where I was actually a vendor for that. So I got to enjoy it from the other side, not just, uh, from being, you know, working, uh, for the town, but being a vendor for that event. So I'm pretty proud of that, that I get to see it from both sides. And it was really fun. I actually sold, uh, little toys and then I was next to the face painter. And I'm going to tell you, we worked really well in conjunction with each other and it was just coincidental. So, um, also just the mention of the floating Christmas tree, which was a beautiful addition that was floating on the lake. So we're pretty proud of those accomplishments in 2022.
I have a, I have a question. Going back to your addition of an art activity class, um, that's going to be at the rec center?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm.
Now, how is that going to, with that new group that's coming into the school system over there where they took over those 22 classrooms?
Right. So they do a lot of life skills and they do a lot of, of art. Um, the, these women just come in and it's just, I say women just because that's, we haven't had any males yet. But they just come in and it's just at will. There's no charge. There's, it's just a fellowship, if you will, of art and the enjoyment of it. There's no, there's no agenda. There's no real, there's no curriculum. It is just to enjoy art as a togetherness and it's just for community's sake. So.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions so far? All right. So our priorities in 2023. Uh, number one, um, and I've been working on this just in the month and a half that I've been here. Um, I am working on expanding our volunteer base. Our volunteer programming will consist of orientation and really reaching out to local communities such as our churches, OM. I've already had a meeting with Rachel Sharp. Um, she is a member of OM and she's going, we, she just sort of is introducing me into their volunteer program to help me educate myself on awesome ways to create a solid volunteer program where we have accountability and a very, we really work within our community. Um, part of that is also reaching out to our schools. I know that we do, um, the, um, Beta Clubs and National Honor Society and all, and those sort of things. Uh, but the high school at Sandy Creek, which is our district, um, the fine arts program has, is called FADs. That's acronym for Fine Arts Diploma Seal. And they have a minimum of 12, or excuse me, 20 hours that they have to, um, satisfy in order to get this diploma seal upon graduation. So I've been in touch with Kelly Galman and we're going to, um, I'm creating a list of volunteer opportunities. So to send out, so these kids will know exactly what's, um, expected, what we need, and we'll get a solid accountability. They're not just going to come and hang out because they actually need these to satisfy these hours. So really want to work on that. So, um, uh, anybody have any questions about that? Um, our pickleball program, we're really proud of this. Um, I've been in touch with John Huddleston, Nancy Huddleston, their couple. Um, and they are, uh, really, really neat people. They are, um, let me do this. Um, uh, he used to work at the YMCA. He's been in Noonan and they're members of the White Oak Country Club. But they are, uh, members of the PPR, which is the Professional Pickleball Registry. And, uh, they have won so many medals. Uh, they played in the night, excuse me, the 2019 Nationals and also the US Open in Florida. And Nancy herself is a silver medalist. And so it's really impressive. Their credentials are amazing. And I've met them personally. They came and played last Friday. And, um, they're just beautiful people. So they have lots to offer us as far as teaching lessons and also, um, helping us form tournaments, you know? So, um, we're really eager for our pickleball courts to be, um, finished this summer. So. Any questions about that?
We're creating a volunteer board for that though, right?
Well, that's the plan. Mr. Campbell, you had a separate person, I think, from, uh, from who Kristen, Christie just mentioned. Uh, it, it sounds like we probably need to have a single point of contact. Um, probably you guys where those folks are directed. Cause we have a lot of interest in the pickleball program despite the fact that it's a mud hole right now. But it's been a long time coming and, and I think if, if, if the success comes to Tyrone like it's come to the other places where they've built pickleball, we're going to need a, a, an association, if you will. So yeah, um, it sounds like the folks you're talking to and the folks who have talked to Mr. Campbell probably need to get together because it sounds like, I think, I believe the person that Mr. Campbell saw too also has some credentials as well. I didn't realize you had talked to these folks. So we need that central point of contact where we can get this pulled together.
Well, and we have people who came and asked for it. So if they're going to ask us for it, they hopefully can volunteer.
Yes, sir. Um, I, I just, uh, there was a concern of leadover for, um, uh, the pickleball courts. It is such, it is in such high demand and all the rage that, um, we really feel like there's going to be other pickleball members that come, um, from other communities, from Peachtree City. Um, and, uh, so I've been researching all the pickleball courts, um, in, uh, the area to see who all has pickleball courts, um, available. How many, how, who, what, how much it costs, any information I can get on our local, uh, pickleball supporters. Um, I do know, uh, that Fayetteville is now building with the same construction people that we're using. Um, they are now getting four courts, um, that are, that are going to be going under construction. And I got that from Anita Godwin. So I just wanted to have that information so that when there is a concern for crowded courts, if that comes to be an issue, we can have information available to our, um, the pickleball players and, and educate them on all the different places, um, that, uh, pickleball is offered. Just so we can sort of spread the love of that information. So. We're really proud of that. Um, and they are a lively bunch. Let me tell you, we, I enjoy listening to them play when they come in the rec center.
Are they local? The hostess, are they local?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. There. All right. So, uh, something that we are, um, working on is creating an ad reel for the DDA. We're doing a movie night. September 1st is, uh, our finale of the First Fridays. Um, and before we show the movie, How to Train Your Dragon, uh, we will be doing this ad reel to advertise, um, for the, um, DDA and showcase the town, what.
On the right, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Am I on the right slide?
Um, that is it right there.
I just want to make sure.
Did I skip? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
There you go. You got it. I got so involved in looking at you all and what I was doing. I apologize. Um, but, um, and we'll also be advertising, uh, for what the recreation and the library programs, um, and what their events will be doing. Um, and also reiterating the First Fridays and so in that ad reel. Um, so we also are going to try to add a big back to school bash. Um, we're aiming for July 1st. We're going to see if it works out. Um, if it compromises the budget at all, we'll push it, you know, to next year. But the overall goal is just to welcome our, our school districts and have families and kids come in and just celebrate the, the next new school year. And with the theme being big and, uh, have oversized yard games, oversized food. I just imagine huge turkey legs and, um, oversized suckers and the big sunglasses and everything just oversized, just as a fun theme, just to welcome them back. Um, possibly have the way of life, um, uh, work with rotary and offer the backpacks, um, with school supplies. Um, and then I'd like to get in touch with, uh, you know, the barber shops to maybe offer haircuts, you know, and such as that, just to get our kids ready and excited for school. So that's something that we're hoping for and I'm planning on, but we'll just see if it happens. So, all right. Um, let's see here. Okay. So, um, so what we are proposing for recreation for 2023 is our pickleball. And again, touching on our silver, silver medalist. I apologize. I have alarms set.
For yourself?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I made sure my phone was off, but I didn't check all alarms. I apologize. That is actually my, um, make sure to get back to work on time from lunch because I'm getting used to my schedule. So that is that alarm. So I am sorry about that. Anyway, um, we will hopefully offer the, um, pickleball classes and we'll set those up just like we have our regular classes where we do a 25, 75 split of cost. So, or, you know, um, where they will make 75% and rec center will make 25%. Um, library and rec events, we're really hoping to join up with the library uh, for our Halloween event and Christmas. Um, also, uh, what I'd like to do is, um, when we go to senior, uh, programming, I have on their lunch and learn, we'd like to offer that Wednesdays from 11 to 1. We used to offer that. We want to bring it back. Um, and so COVID sort of interrupted a lot of that. So a lot of what we used to do, we're slowly increasing that and really want to bring that back. One of those areas that I'd like to bring this, um, that I'd like to bring back to that is, um, I've been in touch with the Fayette County Extension, the UGA and our. I've been in touch with the Fayette County Extension, the UGA and our, with our Pollinator Gardens. And so I met the women that were out there. Again, I'm new, so I didn't know who they were and I introduced myself, got a lot of information about them. And I'd like to offer the free classes concerning the Great Pollinator Census. And then they have, here I got this. On June 19th, they're doing the Master Gardeners where they establish a butterfly garden. And they'll be, they'll be, excuse me, they'll be celebrating their annual support of the pollinator health. And so there's a special week for that. There is also a special, and I just made a tiny note of this, where they will have Bat Week in October. And I thought how fun that would be to make bat houses, maybe cutting down on our mosquito issue, on our low-lying area, I just made a quick note of that. So, but August 23rd and 24th will be the days that they really, they work with classrooms, homeschoolers for the Great Georgia Pollinator Census. And I really want to bring that to the rec center. I think since we already have the gardens, let's, let's educate people on it and really advertise for that and get people involved with, with that. Perhaps even offer a macro photography class and take, and take pictures of the flowers, you know, insects and such as that. We'd also like to bring back our quilting, our, our sewing. Ladies, we've had our, she's dropped by, but we just need to get that going again. And that's a hopeful thing for us. And then some special programs that we'd like to do. Linda herself is awesome at canvas, so we'd like to offer canvas lessons. And then also in, being in touch with our gardening. One, one kind of goofy thing that we're going to be doing is our goat yoga. So Jenny Mount, who's on the DDA, of course, she has these hysterical goats that we have been to visit several times, babies galore. And so we also acquired a new yoga teacher. So why not bring those two together and do something fun and unique such as goat yoga? I can't explain it that much further because we have no idea how it's going to go, but we're going to try it and it, and we've already had people emailing and interest just in this goat yoga. And we're really looking forward to that, so. All right, and of course we have our lineup of special events for 2023. Our first one is April 21st, that's our Spring Market. And Sandy Creek Jazz Band, my son is part of, is coming to perform. And so we hope to, all right. That's going to be amazing, I'm sorry, I lost track of what I was doing. But, and then May 5th is our First Friday and we are having the band Motown come and they're supposed to be fantastic. June 2nd, we're having our country band come in. And then our Funk 80s is July 7th. And our hopefully, hopefully, big back-to-school bash. And then First Friday for Hunter Callahan. And then September 1st is going to be our movie night with How to Train Your Dragon. And then October 6th and 7th, of course, we all know is Founder's Day. And then November 26th, we'll have our tree lighting and Christmas market. Through those? All right. Our recreation budget, the special programming supplies line item. For 2020, excuse me, 2022 to 2023, we had $16,000. We didn't spend all of that, so we have offered some of those funds to the DDA to help with First Fridays. This year we are proposing to ask for $31,000 and that is to help pay for our fireworks show and our ice skating rink for Christmas. And then possibly our merry-go-round, which we'll probably need to get sponsors for. We will also be sort of offsetting the cost of that through tickets being sold for all of those rides, the ice, the ice rink and the merry-go-round. Questions about that so far? So park maintenance for 2022 to 2023 is $12,000 and we're asking for $17,000 because we're bringing back the strong man and we're doing it on the concrete pad out front, Shamrock Park. But we need to resurface and paint that little platform. So we're asking for $4,800 to do that. That is the reason for our budget increase. Any questions on that? Better than I thought. Yes, sir. Oh, sure, sure. All right.
This chair's about to get a lot better looking.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, he did. Okay.
Okay. So the additions that we'd like to have to existing events for Founder's Day, given our carnival theme, we would like to do the Shamrock Wheel and also some carnival trailers, which is a four-game setup. And then for Christmas, we'd like to add the ice skating rink, fireworks and a Christmas merry-go-round or carousel. Our Founder's Day budget. Last year, we asked for $31,459. Five cents, things did not go as planned. So, and please forgive any history information that, I hope I tell you all this right, but A-Abby paid $10,000 for our fireworks. And we gave any vendors, hires, purchases, rentals, the choice of whether or not they wanted to move their sponsorship to another event or to be refunded. A-Abby chose to help us pay for our Christmas fireworks, which is why we, since they'll hopefully help us this year with Founder's Day fireworks, we are upping our Christmas budget. So this year we need 50, we're asking for $50,000 for the Ferris wheel. It'll be a 50-foot Ferris wheel and the four-game trailer with staff and that's about 18. I wanted to let you know that I am pursuing heavily sponsorship and I've been doing a lot of research on this. One thing that I really want to do and I want to get to the page, and I'll get to this in a minute, but we're, I want to focus on Home Depot right now. And the reason being is because we want to do Edison lights all through above downtown. This is something that we, we had a meeting about and so we just thought they would be really lovely. They would cross at certain points and so we're working on trying to get that. So when I met, when Linda and I met with Mitch, he said that it would be best to use the same brand Hampton Bay, which were purchased at Home Depot. I did a little research and, let me find my page here. I looked on Home Depot's website because I wanted to check how much those lights cost. And initially, our goal is to do 60 strands of Edison lights to meet the measurements of the, of the street. Each strand is 48 feet and $59.97. And you multiply that by 16, you get $3,598.20. Home Depot happens to offer 30% off. That would bring it to 25, excuse me, $2,518.74. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to see if they would sponsor us, that, that we're going to use those lights anyway. I really want to focus on them. And I have another little idea where we're doing an elf on the, elf off the shelf. And I'd like to bring the elf to some of their First Saturday workshops that they do with kids. And so to maybe do pictures and advertising, marketing for them in that regard. And I can touch on that in just a minute. Sorry, Brandon, I know you're like. Let me get back to where I need to be.
Chris, can I ask you something?
Yes.
Those lights, are, is that for just during events or all the time?
So we had talked about doing, for Christmas and, but we also thought it would be really nice. We leave the ones up at Shamrock all across and those are the ones that they're trying to match. And so we thought it would look nice year-round, you know? And that way we don't have to take them down, it really adds to this small-town charm. And so we think it'd be really beautiful if it, if it goes through, so. The, on this particular slide is showing you the different pictures of the four-game trailer that we're looking to acquire and also the Ferris wheel. We just really feel like it would be a neat addition to our carnival theme for Founder's Day. The game trailer will have attendance and it would be about $5,500. The Ferris wheel is going to be about $12,500 and called Shamrock Wheel. We're getting it through big round wheel companies. Anybody have any questions about that? I know I kind of skipped around a little bit.
Would you, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, would there be a charge to that?
Yes, and I wanted to, I'm glad you asked that because the, for any of these new activities that we're implementing, such as the ice skating rink, I'm just going to list you the ticket prices of what we, Linda and I have talked about for each item. For the ice skating rink, the tickets and time would be 20 minutes at $10 each. And we did that based off the, you know, two-hour timeframe that we'd have and sort of the amount of, number of people we can maximize on the skating rink for its measurements. And then we thought, well, maybe we better have a way to know who's been on it, how long. And so we thought about doing three different color bracelets. And so the first group will get this color bracelet and then, you know, they can, or what have you, as a way to keep that time. Carousel tickets, it is a manned ride, so they're in charge of how long the carousel will go around. We just thought a dollar each, you know, just trying to keep costs down, you know, for, especially around Christmas time. The Ferris wheel would be $2 each. And when we get our zip line for Founder's Day, we would charge $5 each. And we're in hopes that this will just help offset some of the costs. But more than anything, it'll help with crowd control so that we can, you know, it won't just be everybody at one thing, you know, just tickets will help kind of control that. As far as entertainment for our Founder's Day program, we're having, we're going to have two different bands. The first one is going to be a Beatles tribute and it's called Rongo and Friends. It's sort of a play off of Ringo and it's Ron Burns and he came in the other day and very nice man. And that, what they do is they do Ringo's songs and that's who they focus around. Just not all, they do a lot of the Beatles songs, but mostly focusing on Ringo. His name is Ron, so it's Rongo and Friends. The other one is Block Party Band, PTC. And they are a classic rock, R&B, pop. And I researched them and they are going to be performing. Their next gig is April 29th at Grazing here, so if anybody wants to do them, they will be performing there. We wanted to change it up and not just do bands, so we are trying to implement a magic show. Ken Scott is a local magician. And then we're working, Patty at the library has been wonderful with sharing her resources and perhaps doing Birds of Prey, but just really doing an eclectic variety of entertainment, not just bands, you know, but kind of shake it up a bit.
Getting back to the ice skating, where are the ice skates coming from? I can't imagine too many Tyroneans own a pair of ice skates.
So they are with, the rentals come with the ice skate.
There you go, thank you for that.
You're welcome. So our Christmas decoration budget, Brandon?
I hit it.
I hit it. I feel like I want to do that. You know, like they used to do. All right, so holiday decorations, last year's budget was 12,000. Tweak it over just a little bit and that was due to our increase in quality of Christmas decorations. I think we can all agree that they were really beautiful. It also was to be to our buckets for the trees, for the tree farm, garland, wreaths and so forth. We're just trying to build up our Christmas decorating for the town. And I think it's really paying off because it's just been really beautiful, so. That for this year is going, we're asking for 18,000. Oh, I know what, the 10,000 of that is going to be through our fireworks. Again, as I mentioned before, A-Abby sort of scooted their sponsorship to Christmas in lieu of our cancellation for Founder's Day. So they helped us out with our fireworks last year. Well, this year Founder's Day will happen and so we won't be getting that sponsorship there. So we're hoping to get that sponsorship, or this money, to pay for a $10,000 fireworks show and it'd be about 10 minutes long. Through Deep South Fireworks, he's just a fabulous fellow, really on fire. He's already met with us onsite and coming again March 28th to walk to make sure he knows every little thing, every placement. And Linda, Mitch and I will all be meeting with him. So, and then he will also be doing our, our Founder's Day fireworks, so.
Can I just request that when y'all have that meeting, would you have someone reach out to the chief and have somebody from his department onsite as well? Because they're, they're going to have to be responsible for safety containment. It would, I think it'd be helpful to have somebody on there for that.
My pen has decided to break, so I have ink all over. No, it's just all over my hands, so it's fine. Okay. Thank you for that. Oh, and also the rest of that 15,000, 10,000 for the fireworks, 5,000 will be for the ice skating rink. So that'll be the cost for that. The merry-go-round, I'm going to try very hard to get sponsorship for that. It'll be another $5,000 and I'm in hopes to work really hard, hopefully with Home Depot. That it being a lot of our Christmas, that's why I'm really focusing on them. Really trying to beef up our sponsorship levels and benefits. I've been working on creative ideas, not just through marketing, through digital and the traditional ways to do it, but maybe even doing a sponsorship activation. And what that means is, is the sponsors will come in, like say, for instance Coca-Cola, let's say they put in a cooling station at one of our events, our summer events. And that would be a way that they would market for themselves, but it would also be helping with one of our events as it being very functional. Also photo booths, you know, different companies will sponsor by presenting a photo booth and it'll have all their marketing on it, but we will also have the benefit of having something fun and functional while marketing for them at the same time. So I have a lot of ideas about this that need to push it through, so I'm pretty excited about it, actually. So our proposed Christmas decorations for this year, we want to do wreath bows, paper lanterns under the pavilion. I think everybody remembers the paper lanterns that we did. And we also want to do lights for the lanterns. We also want to do a giant wreath for the town hall. We also want to do a giant wreath for the town hall clock. I talked to Mitch about this, and that we already have lights going across the front of the building. He thinks that he could hook up lights to be able to light that wreath, so hopefully that would add to the aesthetic. So we'd like to do a lighted arch over the bridge. That'd be a beautiful addition to sort of highlight that and anything that may connect any events over at the library or the Rick Center to the actual Shamrock Park. We think that'd be. Also, and this is one of my favorites, lighted deer. I think that that would be so pretty. They're one of my favorites, so I really like that one, but that's something that we hope for. Then we'd also like to do large ornaments for the town tree. Little ornaments just aren't really to proportion, so we want to add more ornaments, and they're just the big bulbous ones that hopefully Home Depot could buy.
I may on that.
Yes.
Years ago, we found large, I'm talking about beautiful bulbs. We're in that white brick building next to the old town hall. It should, they should be in black plastic bags up in the Christmas room, up on the second floor, up there. And I'm sure Mitch, or Dave, or Matt will know exactly where they are.
Wonderful, thank you. Yeah, that's wonderful.
And there was a lot of them.
And saving money, so we already have it. All right. Then, of course, we'd like to do the swag over the road. And then garland around the light poles. I really looked up some adapters. I thought surely there's a way to do an adaptation in the actual bulb itself, but I just couldn't find anything, because I think lighted garland would be beautiful. And I was just thinking, oh, gosh, maybe, you know, the porch lights, how you can use an adapter and plug into the house. And I thought, oh, if we could only do that, but I just haven't found that yet. So if anybody knows a way to do that, that'd be wonderful, to be able to light them. And then the business lights. Lighted Christmas packages under the town tree would be a wonderful just addition for the aesthetic, and also photo op, that'd be wonderful. And then it brings us back to the sixty strands of Edison lights that I'm hoping to get. So one of my projects, pet project, so really hoping to get that. So I hope that we can get all of that implemented, because I think it'd really be beautiful for our town.
Very nice. Did a great job. Thank you.
Questions? All right. I'm noting this one down as my very first one, so. Thank you for being.
You did well. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Ms. April.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so y'all know who I am. I'm April Spradlin. I'm the clerk of court. I have a wonderful assistant named Lindsay, and we have Amy Godfrey, who is our main prosecutor. And she comes as a package deal because her husband's also an attorney, so when Amy can't be here, Isaac is here, or sometimes they both come to help move court through efficiently. And then we have our judge, Alicia Thompson. So if you'll go on to the next slide, Brandon, I appreciate it. The mission of our court is committed to have the trust and the confidence of our people to serve, to fulfill our constitutional role. We want to make sure we abide by all the rules and regulations that we are bound to. We are very, very proactive when it comes to training. The judge met all her legal qualifications for her training that she's required every year. Amy also did the same thing. She does accountability court training as well that helps with DUIs and other types of court that can bring suggestions to our court. I attended the virtual records conference to continue my record certification, and also attended the recertification for me to be a court clerk. I have to have so many hours per year that I have to maintain. Lindsay, she was able to come in and hit the ball rolling. She started last February, and I was able to get her in a clerk's training, so she is a certified municipal court clerk. And she has obtained her GCIC certification and completed training on criminal history through GCIC as well as doing some validations to assist me as well. Some of the accomplishments throughout the year for court is that we successfully completed our GCIC audit back in July, and I want to thank Randy and his team too for the collaboration of helping us make sure that was a successful audit. We completed our town audit with Russian and Company. We continue to maintain the records in accordance to the state of Georgia official judicial branch retention schedule. And Brandon had mentioned briefly about the ARPA money. If everything goes through with that, that's going to be part of our digitization that we're using to digitize all court records. So luckily, the records room that we have back there in the hallway, all the boxes that are in there will be gone, and everything will be digitized, and we will be able to use Laserfish, because I'm sure we all were like, what's a Laserfish? But it's an integrated software that allows, once we put all of our records digital, we allow, we can go back in and search by name, and it pulls up all the records pertaining to that person's name. So it just allows it to be more efficient. And then we also maintained a positive working relationship with the Fayette County magistrate, who are so graciously to do all of our misdemeanor warrants, and we do those virtually as well. They call, officer calls, judge calls, and they do a Zoom call, get the warrant, and we have e-warrants, and it just streamlines the whole process. And then just a little bit to go over our activity for the, for the year. We adjudicated one thousand one hundred and one cases. That includes city ordinances, traffic violations, misdemeanor drug cases, serious violation cases, including DUIs, and cases that were transferred over to state court or superior court, depending on the base charge. We had an increase of funds turned over to the town last year of the amount of two hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. And then if you look at the next slide, you will see just a collection of data that shows the date of the court, for the month, how many cases we adjudicated, how many people paid with credit cards, and then a breakdown of all the fees that come out of the court money, just to kind of give you a general idea. And then for 2023, we are, set our goals to maintain all the standards for GCIC, maintain security of the building, have no formal appeals or complaints, and complete all the training that is required, and to maintain courtroom security, and to develop a virtual courtroom procedure, so we can do probation violations if needed virtually instead of having to bring them over here from the jail and waste gas and things like that. So we're going to try to come up with a way to do it virtually. Larger courts have a better option because it's so costly to do virtual court, but we're going to try to find a smaller angle to do that, be able to integrate it here. So that's all I got. Y'all have any questions for me?
That was great. Thank you, April.
Quick, easy, and now I'll turn it over to Tim.
Too much caffeine.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Ready to wrap this up, ain't you? So before we get started and I talk to you about the PD, I wanted to follow up a couple of things with you guys. At the last council meeting, if you'll remember, a gentleman got up and inquired about the blue boxes at the post office. I promised him that I would inquire, and I did. So I spoke today with the new postmaster, and he told me that, yeah, there was an attempted vandalism, possibly an attempted theft. So they do have them marked off, but you can still use them. Have a sign hanging up. They encourage you, if you're going to drop mel in them, to do it before they close the business day because they empty it at the close of business day. So that's five o'clock Monday through Friday, and on Saturday it's at 12 noon. They are available. He assured me they got new boxes on the way. They don't know when they're going to get there. The new boxes will be tamper resistant. You will not be able to reach your hand on them. That's the update on that. Secondly, I want to touch on something that Ms. Christie told you about, just to explain why. I actually spoke with Linda about the resurfacing of the pad across the street from Strongman. So it's unlevel, and there's some humps in it, and when you're performing those acts, for example, carrying five hundred pounds, you want it to be level. So that's why I spoke with Linda about possibly getting that resurfaced, and then getting it repainted and kind of putting our Tyrone Strongman brand on it. Thought it'd be nice. We attract a lot of attention in October. I'd like to make it nice. So that's just a follow-up on what Ms. Christie told you about. Now we'll talk about the police department. Mr. Brandon told you this earlier when he was discussing ARPA funds, some of the things that we're looking for to get out of ARPA. These are going to be the things aside from ARPA, and these are expenses that we anticipate being over ten thousand dollars. First out, before I get into that, I'll tell you a little bit about 2022. It was a good year. We met all of our goals. Our goal is always to have under a hundred Part One, or what was formerly known as Part One crimes, always under two hundred Part Two crimes. We've always been able to do that, I think, even before I got here, I'm sure. So in 2022, we had seventy-five Part Ones, and we had a hundred and twenty-seven Part Twos. I think we were ranked, when y'all helped me, I think either number two in the state, or maybe number three?
I think it was three.
Yeah, number three, so that's good. This year, we want to meet those two goals, but we would really, really like to be ranked number one. That's what we're pushing for. As far as community outreach, we'd like to have our citizens' police academy, of course. The STOP program, which we started last year, and that's a program where we take new drivers, usually from the high schools, and kind of acclimate them as to what to expect if they're pulled over, what we're looking for, what we expect from them, and what they can expect from us. That went over really well last year. Of course, we want to do coffee with the cop, the zombie apocalypse at the library, touch a truck, our various HOA meetings, trunk or treat, and then, of course, our Founder's Day booth, love that. And then, of course, wrap it up with the Christmas tree lighting where we do the s'mores thing. So let's talk about those purchases, over ten grand. We're asking for one vehicle through ARPA, kind of defer that a little bit. But we'd like to get a Ford F-150, fully loaded. And the reason we want a truck is we've spoken with Fayetteville, Fayette County, Peachtree City. They all have them. They said they're all very durable vehicles, and they come in handy on the roadside when you got to pick up a bicycle or move something from the road back to the PD. So we're asking for that. We're asking for a detective's car. Detective Morris's car is pretty much at the end of its useful life. Detective Johnson, her car already reached it. We bought her one last year. So we're looking to buy Detective Morris one this year. Mr. Brandon talked to you about radar signs this morning. He told you a little about that. That's good stuff. So even though he spoke about it, I'm also putting in here just to keep it on y'all's minds. These signs that not only show the posted speed limit, but they tell you how fast you're going. And when you're exceeding, a little red and blue light starts flashing to catch your attention. So, and as Mr. Brandon told you earlier today, studies have shown that it does reduce speed. So he mentioned the trailers as well. This is, this is what happens. Somebody will call City Hall usually, Brandon, and say, hey, we got a speeding problem over here. What we always do is obviously extra patrol, or we put the trailer out, or both. So when you have people who speed, and he's right, the speed, the average speed is usually pretty close to the speed limit. There will be the outliers, as he described, and that's usually what people see. But when there's a trailer there, okay, and it's flashing your speed, people tend to slow down. They just do. And then when it's gone, if they were speeding, if they were one of the outliers, then they continue doing what they've always done. This will be permanently there, okay? This is fixed to a pole. It's not going away. And when we need to do a speed study, rather than me call Lieutenant Deluse and say, hey, I need you to park the trailer over on such and such a road for a couple of weeks, collect the data, download it, and report back to Mr. Perkins, this is continuously doing it. But we don't have to do that. It will be monitoring 24/7, and we just, that, and I think there's even an option where you can collect the data from your desktop rather than even going to the sign itself. So that's pretty good. So we're definitely looking for some of those. The other thing we would like to get is a new message trailer, not a radar trailer. Comes with one, fine. A message trailer, so that we, because our, our original message trailer, and I'm not sure when you bought that.
Thousand nine.
Thousand nine. It's kind of at the end of its life. It's still usable. I think some of the lights may be replaced, and we were hoping to replace that with a newer one, and then utilize that one in a scenario where all the other two were out and the third one was needed either by us or by Scott at public court. And folks, I hope I didn't take up too much of your time.
Chief, I got a, I got a thought, a question for you anyway. We've been averaging, what, one, possibly two new vehicles for you a year?
Oh, yeah. So, so I'll elaborate on that, and I should have told you this. You remember in 2020 when we bought none, because we didn't know what the economy was going to bring us?
Right.
It kind of put us behind the curve, so we're, so we're trying to catch up.
Well, that's my point. Is it something that we should, over at least maybe the next year or two, we have to increase that and get possibly two or even a third one for you?
We typically get two a year. This year, I'm going to try to get three, and I may do it again next year, and that should put us back in sync with where we were before.
That's my concern.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to get, I didn't want to get behind, and then we're struggling.
So we like to take them out of service when the miles get so high that they're not really patrollable. So I think that if we get three this year and possibly three next year, we should be right back where we were as if 2020 didn't happen.
All right.
Yep. Anybody else? Guys, have a good day, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I think that wraps up everybody, so you want to go to public comments? Anyone? Then are there any staff comments?
I just want to thank staff for all their hard work in putting this together. This, this is, it's not something that's thrown together, obviously, and I think from the, you know, presentations you saw, you know, our staff worked really hard throughout the year. But I want to thank everybody for working hard to put this together, and, you know, I know a lot of thought and a lot of work went into it, so thank y'all for your continued hard work on behalf of the town. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Well, I, I think I can speak for everybody here. You guys have just done an outstanding job making this presentation and the information that you've given, have given us. It's a lot for us, for everybody to digest, but everybody here, staff and, and everyone, has done a phenomenal job. And we, as a council, want to thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if there's no one else, we'll go to council comments.
Got to mention the museum. Okay, so May the fifteenth will actually be our second year. So since that thirteenth falls on Saturday, we are looking at that date. Coffee in cars that morning from nine eleven, and so. Finish up and move out, and so our program will actually start at 12. Also hope to have. Back in Tyrone at the museum. They need an Adams to talk about that. And. Also on our program, so we'd like for everybody to come. So we will.
May fifteenth?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you.
Also, we've also got. It's. Have, we have. Bunny is going.
Anyone else?
I would just like to say that one of the people in town came up to me the other day and said she and her husband watched our Thursday night meeting, which, you know, it's nice to hear people watch those online. And she said she was just wanted to let me know how impressed she was with our town manager, how thorough he was, and how smart, and yada, yada. So I wanted to make sure I put that on record.
Oh, boy. Watch that head now.
What was that that she?
I'm sorry. We didn't hear you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Anyone else, Mr. Bailey?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Davenport, is there an executive session? Ready to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Very nice.